Welcome to the June meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure their microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Sean Cornet and I'm Chair of the Commission. Present from the Commissioner or Commissioners, Amtel Siddiqui, Marilyn North-Pagan, Susan Mallon, Kim Lynch Proctor, Heather Campbell, Theresa Rossell will be joining us later, Pam Karnick, TJ Zhong, Jeff French, and Counselor Courtney Walcott. The Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Constable Mark Newfeld. Chief, or XO, would you please introduce those you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Thank you Chair. Speaking today will be Acting Staff Sergeant Mike Tuskins for item 5.1. For item 5.2, it'll be myself. For item 5.3, it'll be Chief Mark Newfeld. For item 5.4, it'll be, sorry, for item 5.3, it'll be Deputy Chief Paul Cook. And for item 5.4, it'll be Chief Newfeld. And for item 5.5, it will be Deputy Chief McCollin. And before I turn it back, I'll turn it over to the Chief.
Thank you. So anything else?
Darren, I've sort of lost the plot here. I apologize. So are you turning it over to me to introduce the reports?
Not yet. We have a few other things to do first. Thanks.
Thank you. Then I'll leave it with you for now. Sorry about that.
Thanks. No problem. For those not familiar with our role, the Calgary Police Commission is a body of ten community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us and that we give direction to the service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of complaints process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight public meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. In addition to these meetings, there are also private monthly committee meetings where commissioners dedicated time to work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. To open our meeting, I would like to acknowledge that this call is taking place on the traditional territory of the Nitsitapi, made up of the Sichiga, Bagani, and Gynae First Nations, the Yarahe Nakota First Nations comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Wesley First Nations, and the Tutina First Nation. These are the people who made treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta, Region III. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people in our community. The Calgary Police Commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with our colleagues, families, and citizens who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format. The public session of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on our website so we can make it available to all those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will then have the chance to ask questions or make comments. Once we've completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Anyone who registered to speak before noon today will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation session, we will close the public portion of the meeting and ask the media and chief to remain on the line with me for a brief media availability. I would also like to add that this is only our second meeting back in person, following two years of virtual meetings during the pandemic. We are returning using a hybrid model for our meetings as the level of public interest and participation in our meetings has outgrown our boardroom. And we want to ensure that our meetings remain as successful as possible. Given this still new for us, as you may have seen earlier in this meeting, we expect there will be some bumps on the road and we thank you all in advance for your patience. To start our agenda items, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing no objections, hearing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Seeing no requests, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda to be brought forward for discussion? Hearing no such requests, I declare both the agenda and the consent agenda approved as presented. And now for my report. I would like to begin with a couple of notes that exemplify the depth and breadth that the service of the police members and their families provide to communities. First, there were several CPS members and employees who passed this month. We would like to acknowledge their passing and our gratitude for their service. It can be very difficult to come to terms with loss, especially when there are a number that happen closely together and our thoughts are with their families, friends, and colleagues, and the entire CPS family. Serving Constable Jason Barham, Retired Detective Scott Sampson, civilian employee Catherine Schmidt, she passed in February but her celebration of life was this month, Retired Detective Jack Dardis, Retired Staff Sergeant George Rocks, and former CPS cadet Macy Boyce. Secondly, I would like to acknowledge the armed robbery incident that occurred yesterday in San HBC, which injured six police officers. Incidents like this underscore the dangers and unpredictable nature of police work. The policing community in Canada is very close and as such, many of our members may have friends or family employed with the SPD or VCPD. We offer our sincere appreciation to all members for the important and challenging work you do daily. For the rest of my report, I'll start with acknowledging some important celebrations that occurred this month. On June 21st, Canada celebrated National Indigenous Peoples' Day. And last week, Calgary celebrated Aboriginal Awareness Week with a number of different events. I was honored to be invited to speak at the AAW Powwow, a wonderful celebration of Indigenous cultures. It was an honor and inspirational to be a part of it. Making these occasions gives us a chance not only to connect with and celebrate the cultures of our city's first people, but they also are a chance to reflect on the work we do as a commission and service to support reconciliation. As part of our role, we have the responsibility to ensure that policing in Calgary meets the needs of everyone who calls this city home or comes to visit. Canada's 94 Calls to Action and 231 Calls to Justice have given our Commission and the service a strong guide for how to fulfill that responsibility for Southern Alberta's Indigenous community. We are committed to this work because it matters and we're committed to this work because it's the right thing to do. June was also Pride Month, during which we celebrate the gender and sexually diverse people in our community. While significant progress has been made towards inclusion and equality, we recognize that much more work needs to be done. We look forward to Calgary further celebrating this community during Calgary Pride in the fall. As far as Commission activities over the past month, our Commission had the opportunity to spend a day with the officers who train new police recruits and with the K-9 unit. The day gave us great insights into police training, de-escalation techniques, and the use of force approaches. During the pandemic, we have missed having these opportunities to learn about policing directly from members of the service. We are looking forward to having more similar opportunities in the future as this knowledge gained allows us to better understand the implications of the decisions we make as Commission. The Commission also presented our annual report to council on June 21st. It was great to be able to highlight some of the successes, opportunities, and challenges of the Commission for City Council. And finally, I want to acknowledge some of the service's success this past month. Members of the service continue to work hard to deliver the community's desire for a different approach to people in crisis. Just yesterday, the service announced that it is looking for social agencies to pilot new community mobile crisis response teams. These teams will be made up entirely of support workers who can be sent to people in mental or emotional distress, people who would otherwise be sent a police officer. Excuse me. Results from, excuse me. Results from the Calgary 911 and 211 co-location pilot were also announced and over 250 calls that would have gone to the police were diverted to the distress center instead. As the model grows, the impact will also grow to divert even more calls. We were also proud to see the service take steps to permanently acknowledge the original people of Calgary by installing flagpoles for the Treaty VII and Métis Nation flags in front of police headquarters. These small actions can help facilitate larger change as people are continually reminded of the importance of reconciliation. Investigatively, we were once again saddened by many of the cases officers faced this month, but we are grateful to them for their tireless work to keep our community safe. A drug trafficking operation was dismantled, a grandparent scam was stopped, charges were laid in another unprovoked attack on C-Chain platforms, two homicides were quickly solved, and countless other cases resulted in charges. You'll hear more about these in the reports to follow. Members of the service have also worked to improve safety on our roads by educating on commercial vehicle safety and public safety, for example, stopping a driver going 85 kilometers per hour over the speed limit. And finally, the service also stepped up to help with the response to the flood threat. A letter was forwarded to me from the Calgary neighborhoods at the city that praised officers for their seamless cooperation with the dope team, drop-in center, Calgary Homeless Foundation, and other city partners. It's clear that the service's constant work and coordination with partners in the community is paying off, and especially in times of crisis. It ensures Calgary's most vulnerable residents get quick and coordinated support. On behalf of our Commission and Calgarians, thank you to all members of the service involved in these successes. We deeply appreciate the work you do for our city every day. With that, we will now move on to the first formal presentation of today's meeting. The service will be sharing with Commission and public about its plans for organizational wellness. So I will ask the service to please go ahead.
Thank you Chair and members of the Commission for the kind comments and in particular acknowledging the family tragedies that have occurred. We're a large employer, obviously, with a large number of people, but it certainly did feel like June was a heavy month and the circumstances of some of those tragedies were very difficult. So thank you very much for acknowledging that. As you've highlighted, a large volume of really good work done by the members of the service over the past month. And as you've indicated, the call diversion and the crisis response work continues to progress with some recent announcements that will bring some exciting changes in the months to come. And Deputy McCollin, I know, will speak further to that in her report. June, as you said, was National Indigenous History Month and an important time to reflect on the struggles and sacrifices of the Inuit First Nations and Métis communities, as well as to learn about it, to celebrate the community's rich history and culture. And you mentioned a couple of the items. It was a busy month for our service in relation to to National Indigenous History Month. We began the month with the unveiling of Indigenous CPS uniforms, both male and female versions. And these were gifts from the Urban Society for Aboriginal Youth of Calgary here in cooperation with local talented, very talented artist Sue Spotted Bull. The iconic CPS uniform was transformed to include Indigenous elements and to symbolize the service's ongoing relationship and collaboration with Indigenous communities. If you've not seen the uniforms, I would encourage you to drop by headquarters when you're there. They're on display in the lobby and they're absolutely phenomenal. So something you really need to take in. As you mentioned, we permanently raise the Treaty VII and Métis Nation flags at our headquarters facility. This was done in a really touching ceremony involving community and our employees and stands as a symbol of inclusion, as well as a visual representation of our nation-to-nation commitment with First Nations, Métis, and Inuit partners. We were humbled and offer a sincere thanks to local elders, traditional knowledge keepers, and Indigenous Advisory Circle as well, and to the general community who worked with us over a long period of time actually to bring that idea into a reality. This last Saturday, we were humbled also to be invited to participate and to participate with yourself in the grand entry for the National Indigenous Day in Powwow. And that took place at Fort Calgary last Saturday. I attended personally to represent CPS and it was a great day, a good turnout, cooperative weather, which up to that point, we weren't so sure what was going to happen. But it was a great atmosphere of celebration, learning, and fun. And while we know there's more work to be done as we move forward on our shared path, truth and reconciliation, the steps that were taken this past month are a continuation of the spirit and intent of two partners moving forward together in a good way. I'm also excited to present the June Chiefs Report, which includes several timely presentations on a number of interesting topics related to employee wellness supports, a wrap-up update on the COVID-19 pandemic, as well as updates on crime and safety issues that are really important to Calgarians. Before I jump into those reports, also wanted to just take one moment as well to acknowledge the critical incident that occurred on Vancouver Island yesterday, the one where six police officers were wounded by gunfire. Three of those, of course, from the Sanich PD and three from the Victoria PD, after officers responded to a dispatch call of a bank robbery in progress in the community of Sanich. And while the investigation's in its early stages, obviously, it appears that heavily armed suspects robbed the bank and were confronted by members of an integrated team of tactical officers who responded to that call as the individuals tried to make good their escape. As we know, these situations are very scary for community, for businesses, for individuals, and also disconcerting for police officers, and not just those that are directly affected by the incident, but also police officers generally and the families of police officers, as you've acknowledged earlier. We've reached out to our colleagues in British Columbia to offer our most sincere well wishes to those officers as they continue on with their recovery. Some, as you know, remain in hospital, some have been released. And in addition, we've offered them any supports that we can provide as they navigate their way through those issues, both with respect to the impacts on the community and also with respect to the impacts inside the organization. And Sergeant Huskins is going to talk a little bit about some of the supports that we might be able to provide during his presentation. So with that, I will move to item 5.1, and that's the organizational wellness presentation. And I'm going to turn it over to Rory Thompson. Rory's the Executive Director of Learning and Recruitment Division, as you know, and he's here this month representing Deputy Chief Raj Gill, who's away. Forward to you Rory.
Thank you Chief. Good afternoon Chair, Commissioners. In the absence of Executive Director of the Wellness and Resilience Division, Dr. Stacy Ferland, it's my pleasure to introduce Staff Sergeant Huskins. He has over 20 years' service and is currently in the role of the Reintegration Program Coordinator. The intent of the presentation is to increase your awareness and understanding around the foundational work that has taken place in order to create the Organizational Wellness Unit. Huge credit to Staff Huskins, to Dr. Stacy Ferland, and also the rest of the Wellness and Resilience Division as they truly are leading in this space. The structure and programs, which you'll hear about shortly, are best in class across Canadian law enforcement agencies. Without further ado, I'll hand you over to Staff Sergeant Huskins.
Thank you very much sir. Good afternoon, everyone. Just waiting for the presentation to come up. Thank you. I'm going to be speaking today about the new organizational wellness unit. So this new unit is going to be taking police wellness to the next paradigm shift. CPS is committed to fostering and sustaining a healthy, the health and wellbeing of members through a dedication in delivering innovative strategies and tools to engage, understand, and support the physical, psychological, and emotional wellbeing and mental health of our members, both sworn and civilian, who face unique challenges as part of a first responder organization. The new OMU's mission statement is to support all CPS members, sworn and civilian, as well as their families through a person-centered approach. We aim to resiliently work together to achieve a overall holistic health and wellness outcome, uphold a strong commitment to confidentiality and ongoing therapeutic relationships, and to deliver a trauma-informed approach while cultivating a culture of trust, acceptance, and compassion. This new unit is going to be driven by the psychological wellbeing strategy being developed by Dr. Ferland. The primary role of this in-house unit is to provide preventative services within the domains of support, education, intervention, and resources, all with the intention of mitigating psychological risk for employees, again, both sworn and civilian. In the interest of removing stigma and barriers, services offered by this unit are going to be offered at headquarters and any other CPS facility. Team members will be visible and are accessible to all employees while adhering to confidentiality and discretion. As we all know, working in a law enforcement organization affects families. Sports are also available to them. We have the Peer Support Nurse that has just recently been hired and she will be leading to coordinate a family support system and a family case management strategy. So this unit also works collaboratively with our internal psych therapy section in the Wellness and Resiliency Division. And we also partner with our Human Resources Division, our Learning and Recruitment Division, as well as many other departments internally and externally to CPS. So on the screen here is the current teams that are going to be housed within the Organizational Wellness Unit. Under the direction of Executive Director of the Wellness and Resilience Division, unit team members are made up of a collective group of seven trained and certified staff to meet organizational and individual needs of all of our employees and their families. These needs span the continuum of care with strategic goals to prevent and proactive wellness supports. All of these areas are previously established and respected programs and teams within our organization and we have moved them all under the new formed Organizational Wellness Unit. So at the top in green, we have Health Promotion and Wellness Coordinator. In this area, we have a civilian coordinator who conducts wellness courses, wellness seminars, vaccine clinics for flu shots for members, anything along those lines that can be conducted either within a CPS facility or in the public. Our Peer Support Team has been established for a very long time and it is accessible by both sworn and civilian members as well as their families, where they conduct wellness courses, wellness debriefs after critical incidents for both members and the members' families, support members, and remove barriers to other accessible supports. In orange, we have our REACH program and REACH stands for Reaching Employees Absent with Care and Hum... or sorry, Compassion and Humility, or yes, Humility. This was developed to make sure that we stay in contact with any and all members that are off work, whether it's long-term disability, sickness, and absence, even members that are on paternity or paternity leave. So any reason that a member could be away from work, we're making sure that we're staying connected. Lastly, in red, we have the support system that's in place for our injured and our ill. That is the Reintegration Program. The Reintegration Program can and will assist and support sworn and civilian members after critical incidents or traumatic events. These events could be, but are not limited to, officer-involved shootings, use of force encounters, officer injury, or an accumulation of trauma throughout a member's career. This program works closely with mental health professionals, both internally and externally to the CPS. This program also collaborates with WCB, our CPS HR Ability Advisors, and HR Placement Units. We are also in contact frequently with our OHNS nurse. These are just a few of the partnerships that the Reintegration Program has established. I would also like to highlight that we recently had a civilian member come forward to take the Reintegration Course training and we are looking to establish all of these resources on the civilian side. The program's focus, or sorry, the unit's focus, so proactive measures. Right now, we have the training and rollout of the psychological wellbeing strategy. We have our new suicide awareness training, which I took last week as a pilot course and is very well done. We have monthly wellness live streams, education and unit teachings, which is usually conducted by the Wellness Unit. We also conduct and provide onsite mindfulness meditation for our members, both sworn and civilian. Preventative measures of the unit. The Reintegration Program, a way to bring members back to work with a robust and tailored exposure therapy approach, all overseen by a mental health professional. Critical incident stress debriefings that are conducted by our Peer Support Program. The REACH Program, staying connected with those members that are absent from work for any reason. And soon to be our Family Case Management and Family Preparedness Strategies that will be implemented by the Peer Support Nurse Therapist, recently hired. And any crisis intervention that could span involvement from any of the areas within the Organizational Wellness Unit. How will we measure success? Through employee engagement surveys and results, leveraging technology for real-time data analysis and critical outcomes, improve return on outcome data, removal of barriers and stigma, improve access to early intervention and supports, and reduction in crisis situations. So while we are still in our infancy, we are working hard to ensure that we have a robust technology to support statistical analysis and data outcome. In fact, I got an update just earlier this week that is near completion. The Reintegration Program itself is part of a 12-to-8-month experimental study being conducted by Highmark at the University of Alberta. And this study and research is to remove stigma, return to work outcomes, and improve self-efficacy and engagement. Highmark received a $206,000 grant from the provincial government to conduct this research. The Reintegration Program has also been asked to be on an advisory committee for the Institute of Work and Health out of Toronto around mental health programs specifically for Alberta first responders. That is a high-level overview of the new Organizational Wellness Unit. I'm happy to answer any questions. My area of knowledge will be around REACH and Reintegration. Any of the other programs or resources that we can offer, I can certainly take those questions away and get those answers brought back to you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Very helpful and very interesting to see that. I wonder if I could just start with a quick question and ask, are there particular objectives or outcomes that you are looking for as you bring all of these together? You talked about data analysis. Is that the primary ones? Or is there other reasons that you would have done the reorganization to bring everybody together?
As I'd said in the presentation, and this is purely my opinion, Chair, is these programs are already well-established, well-respected, and have the credibility within the organization, but they were placed in different, you know, different divisions, different bureaus. And it just makes a lot of sense, especially when members are hurting in the stigma around mental health and asking for help within this type of work, which is sometimes seen as weakness. It's the complete opposite. It's strength when you ask for help. We put it all in one place, so it's a one-stop shop for our members. They know exactly where they need to go. It's centrally located. It's one location. And all of these units or programs within the Organizational Wellness Unit, we collaborate all the time to come up with the best possible results or approach to assist our members. So primarily, that's why we did it, is because it makes sense for the members. The data and the analytics that we'll be able to provide down the road, once we have that a little more established, it'll just show the return on investment for the service as we'll have less days off from work for members, whether that's long-term sickness, people struggling for lots of different reasons. The Reintegration Program itself is established first in Edmonton, and Edmonton and WCB in Edmonton did some research on mandates lost using these type of resources. And there was a 70% reduction in mandates lost for people that accept or go through programs like these as opposed to those that do not.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Mallon?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First of all, you said something, just your last sentence was "for those who choose to participate." So is participation in this program voluntary? Or are all people who are off at least brought into the program, whether or not they fully engage? And could you give me an idea of how many you have actively in the program now?
Certainly. So it's really hard to push assistance on people that aren't ready for it. So they're always aware of it. Personally, with the Reintegration Program, I've reached out to members over a year ago and they're just knocking on my door now because they're ready. It takes them a while, obviously, accepting other treatment or therapy to get to that place where they're ready to take this piece of the work on. So the only part of the Organizational Wellness Unit that is mandatory is after an officer-involved shooting and that falls to me in the Reintegration Program. We have updated policy and it is mandatory to go through that program after an We have updated policy and it is mandatory to go through that program after an officer-involved shooting. There's mandated psychological therapies, interaction, and then there's mandated supports from two trained peers that report to me. This program, the reintegration program's been up and running for twenty months. We have put. Five members mandatory through that program and we also offer it as supports to witness officers to officer-involved shootings and we had five witness officers voluntary participate. As far as the, our long-term program for mental health in there, we uh, we have put five members. All the way through our long-term program and gotten five members back to work at CPS from a psychological injury in the last twenty months. It takes a lot of time, um, but it's well worth it. We currently have ten members we're actively working within the program and I have nine impending. Where we're just sorting things out with their external clinicians and completing our intake process with psych therapies. So that's on the spectrum of members with occupational stress, post-traumatic stress. The amount of interaction that our peer support program gets day-to-day, it fluctuates, but I know that they're always busy. Same with reach. We have. Upwards of a hundred members that we're always connecting with, um, whether that's the reach program, people reaching out directly. Where we have, obviously, they they maintain relationships on the service and we just use those points of contact. So we don't inundate people doubling up with contact, if that makes sense. And then the wellness program, they're mostly around education and getting access to some of these supports. So they're not really involved with members directly unless it's to an educational purpose. Does that answer your question?
And if I could just stack onto that, Commissioner, I think one of the things is whether or not it's uh, uh, participation is voluntary depends on the program. Because as Mike says, putting these together like this to increase coordination makes for a better suite of programs. And but I think the shift is we're trying to move uh to a more proactive model where we're going to and we have enough programming and we have enough connection. To uh, to uh lean towards wellness checks and this type of thing and and courses and programming that people can take early. Uh, and so some of the indicators of success would be less crisis response, uh, people, less claims, people uh back to work sooner and this type of thing. We have Kelly Dunsmore who works in our accommodations and return to work. She's actually taken some steps to um, bring together kind of a resource team. Uh, through the Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police from other uh, police services that are doing similar types of work. And then looking at those metrics that you're talking about to try to get established consistent metrics across the services. So that we can actually benchmark our programs against one another to see which ones are having the best impacts and this type of thing. But it it made a lot of sense actually to make sure that we were invested in the front end, so we weren't having to overinvest in the back end. And then also making sure that there was a, a good level of coordination between all of those programs. So when individuals are in and out wherever they are along the continuum that Mike showed, um, there's visibility to our wellness folks right across that spectrum. And and you can kind of see where they're moving and trying to get them back to the place of being healthy and supportive.
Thank you. And my, the second question that I had was on measurement and I think you've in part answered it. I was wondering. A lot of the measures, when you put them up there, were kind of um. Qualitative, I guess, um, improve this or improve that. And I wondered how you were going to actually measure that if it was the perception of the participant. And then I'm thinking that maybe you'll then benchmark that against some other services. So. And and certainly the lost days, I think that is one of the hard numbers you can come up with. If you can reduce that, that's a, a good success story.
And I think some of those measures are certainly quantitative and then others are qualitative. And I think some of the qualitative ones, until we get established benchmarks between and among services. We can benchmark against ourselves through our own surveys around people's feeling supported, awareness of programs and this type of thing. So these are the type of questions off the employee engagement survey that we would expect to see the needle move on uh, as a result of the coordination and the, and the integration of these programs.
And certainly the family piece, I think, is a really good addition as well. Cause I noticed that there were some comments, I think, on the employee survey about families feeling abandoned or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner North begin?
Well, thanks for that presentation. That's really good to know that um. CPS is concentrating on the wellness, because the fact of the matter is when we do cut program, programming at the city level. It, the wellness programs are the first to go. So with that being said, we're talking about investment. Um, what kind of investment is in place for the short term and long term to see this programming succeed? In the long term for CPS members? And number two, since we're on the track here when it comes to diversity and inclusion, is there any mechanism in place going forward? That's going to include the, you know, the, the traditional wellness practices of other officers possibly coming into the service?
Try to answer your first question and then you might need to remind me of the second one. But I've already, I've already drawn a blank on your first question because I was listening so intently to the second one.
I'm talking about money. Let's talk about money.
This, this, this came up in, in the LT, ELT meeting yesterday. The infrastructure and the resources are there for what we need. It, it comes down to manpower, right? Which. Well aware that we're all in need of, uh, I made the comment to the chief and to deputy cook, I think asked a question like, I need people to help people. Right? So uh, the things that we need access to are police vehicles and our use of force systems and the facilities. So like that doesn't cost us anything to do those exposures in those areas. The same thing with peer support. Uh, it doesn't really cost much to take a member for coffee and have an honest conversation and actually be present for them in the moment when they need you. Um, so all of those things are in place, which isn't going to really cost us anything. It's just going to be capacity. Um, because we haven't really advertised a lot of these things outwardly to the membership. It's organically grown. It's word of mouth. We're being. Basically promoted by others that we've helped, which means a lot more to our membership. It might not make sense, but that's actually how our membership buys into these types of programs. Is the validity from somebody who's received that, that assistance. Um, so. It comes down to manpower, basically, uh, because I know as, as. Word gets out and we help more people, we're going to have more people knocking on the door for all of these programs.
So it's the same situation in all the other departments that you're having is, is the lack of resources that are there, right? So.
Uh, I can, I can let you know that just through the program that I run, the reintegration program, I have fifty-nine members trained in reintegration. So that's taking the course. Um, the majority of us have prolonged exposure therapy training. The rest of them will be getting it this fall when I, when I organize that. These members all have full-time jobs within the Calgary Police Service and come in and do this work to assist our members off the corner of their desk or on their own time. That's the commitment that our membership has to taking care of each other.
Okay, you ready for the second one? Okay, um, so you know, as, as CPS and commission, we, we, you know, we steer our organizations towards diversity and inclusion. Is there a mechanism in place, you know, somewhere along the line that's going to accommodate? These officers coming into the force, because not everybody's gonna want to sit down and talk to a psychologist. Some of them. Like in my case, will want to sit down with the elder and smudge. Is there something in place to see that those are going to be accommodated? And thus keeping our officers in, in the force?
Short answer is we're already doing it. We, and a lot of these programs, and again, I can speak primarily to the one that I run. The member has choice. The member has control. So if they want to do something, if it's sit with an elder, whatever that is, okay, we'll make it work. Um, saying in my program is member asks for something, I say yes, and then I gotta figure out how to make it work. Um, so with that, like. The member has so much choice, um, because as they struggle, as they're ill or injured, a lot of choice gets taken away from them in these, in different, you know, bureaucratic processes, whether it's WCB. All of those sorts of things, when they come into these programs, whether it's reintegration, peer support, reach. They have control and uh, in my particular program, they get to pick who they work with. So we've kept it very open. Whatever members ask for, we make happen. We've been asked for some, some unique things and uh, I'm very happy to say that I haven't been told no yet to any area of the police service that I have reached out to, to assist a member.
Just to quick out onto that, I know that Andrea Urquhart is on the line here, but I think just at a higher level, we did have uh, a member of the community and. Uh, as a consultant to put an EDI lens on the wellness programs themselves as we were developing the uh, the psychological services strategy. So. Andre, if you're online, uh, this would just be an invitation to speak a bit to that if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. Uh, sorry, chief, I just, uh, I just was added as a, as the panelist, so I missed a little bit of what you just said there at the end. I'm hoping folks can hear me fine, but uh, Mike, great presentation and I think maybe what was lost in Mike's presentation was the absolute commitment he and his team have. To the wellness of our, of our folks and. The enterprise approach that the organization has taken to support members. And so that intricate enterprise um. Movement of, of information between the area that I lead up and Stacy's area and Rory's area. To really wrap our arms figuratively around uh, individuals kind of gets lost a little bit in, in the conversation. And so I, I really hope that that resonates with all of you because that's a really big, big um, move forward for us. And so certainly the team that I lead up uh, works very much uh, in conjunction with Stacy's team and, and Mike. Uh, to support members. And so at every step of the way, they're being offered support in any way they would like to choose. And so that really is important, as Mike said, when choice gets taken away from you. The things that we are monitoring obviously are our stats with WCB and Homewood Health. To make sure that we, our programs are being turned around and, and we're getting those uh, folks back uh, to work as quickly as we can. But one of the interesting stats that I shared uh, that um, at ELT was. For psychological support within the city of Calgary, it takes up to fifteen weeks for people to actually get their first appointment. So these are some of the struggles that we're facing um, as an organization, as many other organizations are facing. And the last one I just wanted to mention is that uh, we have invested so much into this area and to the area of supporting our, our folks. Uh, with many thanks to the commission in giving us uh, some growth opportunities and support for technology. These are really key um, pieces when we talk about that transformation of people, process and technology. And so those are coming to fruition with our city partners and we will be able to really support again. Um, that proactive piece of supporting our, our employees. So um. Feel free to ask me any questions, but uh, but I hope I, I hope I shared enough information with you.
If I can just add, Commissioner, like more specifically to the equity, diverse and inclusion aspect. Every program within the organizational wellness unit has liaised, consulted and met with Kirsten Moore, who we've brought on as that EDI consultant. Um, we've all had meetings and ongoing conversations with her. So we've, we've definitely made sure that we're, we're in that right space that we're covering all of that off.
Excellent. Thank you so much for answering those questions. I'll turn it back to you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks. Uh, perhaps a more detailed question. Um, as we close out Pride Month and Indigenous History Month. How many of the psychologists and medical team are skilled in therapy to address the unique trauma? That's experienced by those from diverse communities in Calgary. And where there are gaps, is there an ability to use online resources or external resources uh, to supplement?
So I wouldn't be able to answer the specific questions on the therapist's qualifications, but I can certainly take that away and, and ask Dr. Ferland to follow up with you. Um, things that I can speak to as far as the, all of the resources that are offered to a member, it doesn't matter their background. We actually have trained members that are from the LGBTQ community. We have um, members from Asian descent, African-American, like we. I, I, I feel like we span the spectrum of the needs of our members, no matter what their background or what they're bringing to the table. I feel we've done a really good job. Not intentionally trying to cover that off. Understand that these members come to us to be part of this. So we have members of these communities coming to us to take part, take the training and help each other. So.
Thanks very much, Sergeant.
Commissioner Campbell, we can get you uh, stats on how many internal resources we have, but we do have a fairly uh, wide menu of external service providers there because. As you know, when it comes to this and with the stigma around mental health, sometimes there isn't the connection. And so sometimes it takes two or three times to get that connection made. And so again, we have a fairly wide range of folks who can provide services. And then uh, Dr. Ferland and her team does a good job of vetting uh, folks that come back with uh, you know, good um, the good reviews and that sort of thing of being helpful. Um, those folks are, are people we go to a little bit more and obviously people who are on the fringe that, that wasn't as much connection with, we'd go to a little bit less. But I think it's important to have that, that uh, that menu of service providers, because it isn't a situation where you can just have one on staff and there will always be that connection. It just doesn't, doesn't work like that.
Can I just add one thing for you? Um. When a member comes to us for help, I don't ask the questions for that type of background. I provide them that list of qualified peers. And if they see somebody from their own community on there that they trust and they pick them. I think it's better that way because it protects them. If they're not ready to open or disclose that. I think that creates that confidentiality and credibility piece to the different programmings that we have. So those options are there and they can, can make that choice on their own again. It's about giving the member back control.
Thanks very much, Sergeant. I appreciate that. I was trying to make sure that when uh, in your, in your presentation, you. You indicated that there was an element of trauma-informed care and often that trauma is unique. Uh, to uh, the diverse community from which you hail. And so ensuring that that trauma-informed care. Aligns with your uniqueness is, is fundamental to being able to come out a well, healthy and uh, viable uh, employee. And think, but thank you for your, your passion and uh, your participation and your leadership in this regard.
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't see any other questions, but uh, yeah, your passion and commitment is, is very, is very palpable right now. So thank you so much for all that you've done with this. And thank you to the service for supporting you and everything you've done, because it is, it is the way forward. So thank you. Uh, with that, um, thank you for that special report. We'll move on to our regular reports. We have three regular reports on the agenda. Uh, I think we'll hear from all three, um, and then turn to commission members for questions. Um, so the first is uh, the check-in on the financial operation impacts of COVID and the pandemic.
Yes, thanks, Chair. Ordinarily, as you know, uh, you would probably be accustomed to hearing from uh, a combined deputy chief topic, uh, Toffick and deputy chief Gill on this one. And neither of whom were available. Deputy Chief Toffick will probably log on later and he'll be available for some questions. Uh, he's attending a meeting in Edmonton on a controlled access crime prevention initiative there with government. So. Uh, he will be on after, but I will introduce somebody who needs to know introduction. Uh, Superintendent Joe Brar will deliver the pandemic update. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Chief. Uh, that is a great introduction. Uh, just similar to what you heard last month with uh, the impacts on pandemic. Uh, impacts on HR, we're starting to see them less and less and to the point where we will be providing a separate standalone report on. Uh, pandemic impacts on HR and just uh, operations. Uh, and we're going to see something similar here moving forward with um. Standalone reporting on pandemic impacts of crime and social disorder. As you're aware, a lot of the public health restrictions, both federally and uh, locally and, and provincially are being lifted and we're starting to see. A return to uh, pre-pandemic activities in life. Even with uh, return to work programs and things along those lines. So the impacts are not as uh. Sipier as they were when we first started the, started the um. Uh, uh, the beginning of the pandemic, there's lots of unexpected things that we've been able to adapt to in, in regular operations, but. What we are seeing is more of a shift from. Pandemic-related protest activities and demonstrations, things along those lines to some of the regular things we would see around. Protest during the uh, several summer months and we're starting to shift our planning from pandemic-related activities to some of the reg- regular. Activities, as you're aware, the Lilac Festival took place here a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we expect the stampede to return to its normal format. And attendance is expected to be a lot higher than it has been in previous years. So we've shifted a lot of our attention towards those types of activities. Um, we will continue to still monitor some of the trends, but um, we won't be um, reporting on them as, as much as we have in the past. So this, so to say this will be the last standalone report on pandemic updates, we will roll that into our regular crime updates. But um, some of the highlights I, I want to make you aware of is just that is we're starting to see a shift from pandemic-related uh, protest activity to some of the normal stuff. And a lot of events. And so our focus is, has shifted there. Uh, we continue to monitor, monitor demonstrations and uh, protest like, let activities and we're seeing a decline in there. As you're aware, um, the Flames uh, were in the NHL playoffs. Unfortunately, did it not uh, make it as far as a lot of us would like to see. But that was a um, very well-managed event. I think we anticipated some challenges due to some of the um. Impacts from the, the, the Court of Queen's Bench order around uh, pandemic-related protests. But I think that uh, it went very well and, and that could be contributed to a, a well-planned and well-managed event by the, the city of Calgary. And you know what? Creating the red lock and having a place for people to celebrate and you know what? Bring some structure to that. And I think the Calgary Police Service, uh, and along with the partnership, be proud of the fact that we were able to manage large numbers of people. Um, you know what? You know what? Even going into a game seven on on home ice and without any any real incidents. So that one went off well. As we move into the stampede, we will be looking at more concentrated efforts on reducing crime and social disorder on the LRT. There's a couple of operational plans that are planned with city partners on the LRT to get ahead of. Get ahead of some of the issues we normally see juring the stampede. And I I think it's important to acknowledge that there usually is a lot higher ridership on the LRT and transit. Just bussing people back and forth out of the downtown core, that in combination with the celebration of the stampede, alcohol. Warm weather, late nights, that usually does create for a challenge for policing. But we're trying to get ahead of it by, first of all, increasing our presence along the LRT lines leading up to the event and then continuing that throughout the. Through the stampede. That brings me, that's pretty much the highlights. I definitely topic gets submitted a report and if you have any questions, we can take those afterwards.
No, just maybe I would just add to that from an internal perspective, because I think Joe talked a lot about the external. But from an internal perspective, I think you're seeing a move to in an endemic state and a return to normal operations. So we don't have any more internal restrictions in place right now. We've actually just this week taken the steps to shut down our COVID incident response, incident management team and demobilize that. The team there is working on demobilization going back. They've done a good job of capturing all the pandemic-related decisions that were made that impacted the business. And made sure that they've gone back and undone everything that we would want to be undone. And then, of course, there's aspects of the business as well that have changed and have changed permanently and things that we don't want to undo. And so things like increased online reporting and this type of thing will be captured. They all put together an after-action report that will be held up kind of against our pandemic response plan for the service. Because, of course, we had the pandemic response plan prior to COVID-19. And of course, that's tested the response plan and continuity of operations. And so that lens will be put on on those plans to see how those need to be upgraded for future events. But at this time, I think federally, there's discussion about the anticipation of a seventh wave into the fall. But the anticipation is that it will be similar to the sixth in that it will likely involve large numbers of infections, but probably not have the health. Outcomes that the adverse health, the adverse health outcomes that impact the the medical system. And so what we would anticipate there is is maybe some employees not being at work. But even those those organizational structures in place now, if you are infected with COVID now, your coding in terms of your your. In time or your attendance is just sick. It's not even specifically COVID-related anymore. So again, another indication we're moving to an endemic state. So if there's any questions on that, we all of us could certainly help that out.
The next two reports are the crime trends report.
Yes, I heard you say we're going to do all of them. So yes, this is the crime trends report from the Bureau of Investigative Supports. And for that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Paul Cook.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commission members. I'm pleased to be here to provide a crime summary on behalf of the Bureau of Investigative Support. I'll share additional information on pharmacy robberies that continue to occur in our city and how we continue to support measures to prevent these crimes. May was also Sexual Violence Awareness Month, and I can provide some insights into how we supported awareness and education to this very important topic. I also have two short cases I want to share to depict the great work being done by members of this service every day. Pharmacy robberies. First off, similar to last month, commercial and pharmacy robberies continue to be a trend. There have been forty-eight pharmacy robberies so far this year. For comparison, for the entirety of 2021, we had eighty-nine pharmacy robberies. Although we saw a decrease in these offenses earlier this year, two weeks ago, we had a significant one-day spike with six robberies occurring on Thursday, June 16th. As I mentioned last month, these kinds of crimes can ebb and flow. That said, we can likely attribute this most current spike to offenders being unable to get into time-release safes or due to the presence of panic alarms. When offenders could not get what they wanted, they moved quickly to a new target, often within the hour. I will say that together with our partners, we're making progress. A new provincial mandate for time-delayed safes was announced earlier this month, which, when paired with other crime prevention measures, should lead to safer workplaces for pharmacy employees as well as customers. Pharmacists are actively working with their advocacy organizations and with police on ways to prevent these robberies. We continue to focus on prevention and keeping pharmacists up to date on trends within the city after each offense. Sexual assault investigations update. May was Sexual Violence Awareness Month, and we are proud to partner with Calgary Communities Against Sexual Abuse on a month-long social media campaign. To raise awareness and provide education on sexual assault and resources for victims. May was the unit's busiest month since February and investigated numbers are higher for May than the last two years, but are in par with pre-pandemic 2019 figures. We are actively working on one hundred and seventy-one files this year with twelve investigators. So that equates to approximately fourteen filed caseloads for each one of our investigators. We've cleared seventeen files in May and completed ten sexual assault evidence kits. Cybercrime update. I'm proud to share an example of CPS cyber working with internal and external partners to hold an individual accountable for his cybercrimes. Between February 2015 and January 2017, the victim was in an online relationship with the accused. The accused recorded intimate video without the knowledge or consent of the victim. The accused began distributing intimate images of the victim to her friends and family and threatened to post all the images and videos online. The cybercrimes team was engaged to assist in gathering evidence and locating the offender. Cybercrimes was able to trace phone numbers, locate social media accounts associated to the offender and engaged in an online undercover operation. Cybercrimes determined that the offender was in Chicago in the United States and engaged the Federal Bureau of Investigations for support. Subsequently, the FBI arrested the offender on related offenses and the investigation conducted by the CPS cybercrimes team was a factor in the sentencing of the offender. Facts from this case were read in and he received an eight-year sentence. Organized crime and offender management update. I'm also pleased to share information about an organized crime investigation that resulted in charges against two men known to police, along with the seizure of drugs, weapons and other materials. In late April 2022, CPS conducted a traffic stop on a rental vehicle that had a license plate concealment device. That could be activated from inside the vehicle, essentially the vehicle or the license plate would be obscured by view. The vehicle was towed and the Organized Crime Response Unit assumed the investigation. Subsequent search warrants on several vehicles and a residence resulted in the seizure of cocaine, OxyContin, cash, a fully-loaded semi-automatic handgun concealed in a hidden compartment. A kidnapping kit, knife and GPS tracking devices. Two brothers, both known as CPS, have been charged in the investigation and on June 9th, 2022, were released back into community. After paying five hundred and ten thousand cash bail respectively and receiving court imposed conditions pending trial. Chief and Chair, that's my update from the Bureau.
Okay, thank you, Paul. I'm going to go ahead and deliver the crime and safety report for the Bureau of Community-Based Policing there since Chad is unavailable. So just by way of a bit of background, so the CPS focus on addressing crime from a proactive basis is a is a critical part of our overall strategy. And it falls in line with the strategic goal of increasing community safety and well-being. And so those are there's some key strategic initiatives that actually appear in the annual policing plan in relation to that. So that so their goals are to decrease violent crime by targeting firearm-related violence and robberies. And we know those are key drivers on the violence side. And then decreasing property crime by targeting break and enters and auto thefts. And again, we know those are key drivers on the property crime side. Also to support vulnerable persons and improve call diversion. This includes downtown safety and we all know that that has linkages also to some of the transit safety initiatives. Increasing road safety and then finally to increase capacity to support major events. And that's important because as we return to normal, certainly as has been referred to, the Lilac Festival, the Powwow Stampede coming. We're seeing events returning in a way that they did in the past, in fact, sometimes with higher participation than there was in the past. And also to address the increasing number of protests and demonstrations that we've seen in terms of a trend over the last while. So the report that the deputy chief submitted there talked about the overall crime rate or the trends from or for the month of May 2022. And then also year-to-date based on the five-year average. So just in terms of highlights from that, what we saw is continued decrease in the actual incidence of domestic violence, which is good news. However, domestic reporting continues to be on the increase. And so that's the interesting, I we've always thought that was a good news story, the fact that the actual violence is going down, but people are reaching out for supports. And so we saw that trend during the pandemic and it's actually continued even post-pandemic as well. Non-domestic violent violent crime continues to be slightly higher than the five-year average. Year-to-date, that's as of May 31st, but was really close to average levels in the month of May itself. And there's a bit of a correlation there that we see annually around the temperature, around weather getting better, economic activity. And also this year, what may be different is the removal of all the restrictions, the COVID-19 restrictions. So we're seeing more people out and about. Shootings and gun violence continue to be a priority for prevention and the investigative side for obvious reasons. Commercial robberies continue to be trending higher than the five-year average and that's driven by pharmacies and cannabis stores. As Paul said, we've had a real issue there and the services worked very hard to try to get in front of that, including the the crime prevention efforts around time-delayed safes with our partners. Following a spike in the month of March, residential break and enters have returned to something more in line with the five-year average for residential B and E's in the city. Overall, vehicle crime is currently sitting eight percent above average after a huge drop you would have seen in the numbers during COVID. You know, vehicles are back out now in parking lots and they're more accessible than they were during COVID. So we've seen an increase. Theft from autos are actually at about five-year levels, while theft from vehicles are what's driving the increase in in those numbers. Or theft of vehicles is driving the increase. Theft from vehicles is actually down a little bit. In May, there was a slight decrease in citywide disorder activity compared to the five-year average. And then year-to-date disorder activity is about the same as the five-year average. So to the to the end of May. Social disorder and crime pertaining to LRT has continued to be an area of concern and focus, as you know, and efforts are being made to address that. And that's being done in partnership with Calgary Transit. Shootings, just to talk about them specifically, we continue to focus our efforts on gun violence and shootings. And so to the date of this report, we've seen sixty-seven incidents of shootings in the city. These continue to be investigated either by the district GIU units or organized crime and offender management in those cases where those linkages are established. And from a prevention standpoint, the service has continued to engage with community, most recently being through a number of town halls and forums aimed at addressing risk factors. Drug and gun-related investigations, the districts continue to focus their efforts on gun violence and including those in connection with illegal drug activity. Because we know oftentimes those have linkages and are precursors to violent crimes, including gun crimes. The investigations are often, you know, involved and require ongoing resourcing to gather grounds for search warrants and this type of thing before action can be taken. There's been some really good success, as there always is. One example is the members of District Two GIU concluded an eight-month-long investigation into a suspected drug trafficking operation that resulted in the seizure of loaded pistol. As well as a significant amount of drugs that had an estimated street value of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. In terms of break and enters, the five-year average for May would be seven hundred and twenty-five incidents in the city. There were six hundred and seventy-one incidents recorded in May of 2022. So it's down seven percent for the month and also but up thirty-three percent from the year prior. But again, that'll be anomalous because the year prior into the pandemic, we saw people at home. So those numbers of residential break and enters were way down during that period of time for reasons that you can understand. There was more guardianship of property and this type of thing. So if we look at the five-year average, that smooths it smoothes out some of the anomalies in from the pandemic years. We're sitting down seven percent from the five-year average. Residential break and enters, those when we talk about break and enters and the numbers in the aggregate, that's all break and enters. If we talk specifically about residential break and enters, there was three hundred and twenty-one residential break and enters. A hundred and forty-five of those were into homes. The remainder of those would be into, you know, locked storage units, parkades, that type of thing. So we sort of separate that out for the purposes of reporting them so people can understand when we talk about residential break and enters, what is actually into someone's home, which is obviously the most invasive. And what might be a storage unit or something like that. That would actually include garages, detached garages as well. And those again, as I said, residential break and enters, the numbers are up thirty-three percent from May of 2021. Commercial break and enters, we had three hundred and fifty reported in the month of May. That is slightly lower than the five-year average for the city. And I should mention too that there's been a lot of efforts because there was some public reporting around repeat business break and enters or commercial break and enters. And so District Six oversaw a number of investigations into series of commercial break and enters. They ended up identifying and arresting a group of offenders who were linked to approximately twenty break and enters. And those were the ones they were able to charge them for. But you can see that certain individuals, a small number of individuals who are active in these types of crimes can actually have an outsized impact on the community. So those types of investigations are very good. And then, of course, the community resource officers have been engaged with the the business communities in their particular districts. And also there at a broader level, working with Counselor Sharp and the business group as well, looking at prevention opportunities. And so there's been some really interesting reports and information provided to that group so that they then can leverage that around crime prevention and and try to prevent victimization in this sort of a way. The I just want to talk for a second on the grandparents scam. You would have seen that CPS and the team pushed out quite a bit of information around the grandparents scam here in the city. And there was a reason that we did that. We continue to see issues pertaining to fraud-related offenses, what they are, but aimed at vulnerable people, the elderly. District Six GIU has been coordinating an investigation. And so generally speaking, what that looks like is scammers posing as grandchildren of elderly people claim they've been arrested. And that they're in urgent need of money for bail or to be released. And what's happened is, or in other cases, scammers have been known to pose as government or law enforcement officials looking to collect bail payments as well. And throughout the course of the investigation, officers spoke with a number of victims who really courageously came forward because we see an under-reporting. And in some cases, people are embarrassed and they don't want to cooperate with these types of investigations and kind of write off the losses. But as you'll see, the losses can be significant. In one case, there was a man who came forward who said there was a an individual who was posing as a court-appointed courier. And had came to his home between February and through to the end of May 2022. Fraudsters would make arrangements to show up at victims' homes to collect thousands of dollars. So in April alone, there was approximately twenty similar incidents reported to police and those resulted in a combined loss of nearly two hundred thousand dollars to to seniors. So District Six was able to arrest and charge a group with seven counts of fraud over five thousand, three counts of using a stolen credit card and other related charges. And again, we continue to sort of hammer this home because I think sometimes, you know, people, when you first hear about this, you think, well, how could this happen? But the reality of it is these folks are good at what they do and they're able to, if they can, if they can get an in with the individuals that they call. They would have successes that you definitely wouldn't expect. And so this has a real impact. Quickly on ongoing LRT safety initiatives, you know that we continue to focus on the issues around LRT safety, very important issue in the city. And follow through with investigations pertaining to crime and social disorder on LRT. Earlier this week, I saw a couple of briefing notes from a couple of files that happened, incidents of violence that happened in the downtown. That were really aggressively followed up on as you would expect by the one district violence reduction team. And and arrests were made just this week in relation to those. On June 13th, members from the CPS participated in a Calgary Transit Safety Stakeholder Meeting. And that included three members of City Council, included Calgary Transit, Calgary, City of Calgary Transportation, partners from Alpha House and the Calgary Homeless Foundation. And the intent of the meeting was to really explore opportunities to collaborate further and share insights in increasing not just safety, but also the perceptions of safety for people on transit. As per last month's update, the CPS and Transit have established a working group aimed at prevention of crime and disorder at various LRT stations using the data. And indicating where we need to be, when we need to be there along the various different transit lines. Inspector Scott Todd from District Five is the CPS lead on this initiative. He's working with the community resource officers across the the district of the eight districts and other members within the CPS and our partners in transit. So again, exploring different opportunities to engage in collaborative efforts. And there's a right now, a citywide operational plan that's being finalized that will go into effect just prior to stampede. Focusing on deterrence as well as investigations and enforcement on transit during stampede. So and that won't just be the transit corridor, but also the C-trains platforms, plus fifteen areas and other waiting areas around stations. That operation will run in partnership with Calgary Transit and it will go until the end of July 2022. That operation will run in partnership with Calgary Transit and it will go until the end of July twenty twenty two. So again, we continue to monitor the numbers and what's going on there, and it's a very important issue and certainly an important issue as we move towards stampede. The last thing I'll mention is that June was Commercial Vehicle Safety Month. And in line with, that was in a province, that's a provincial initiative. So we participated in spring multi agency commercial vehicle checks that went between June seventh and ninth of this year. Various locations around the city. The locations of the check were chosen because of high volumes of commercial traffic. We conducted a media availability on the eighth of June about this to focus on the safety initiative as well as a particular operation that was focusing on speeding speeding and street racing as well. Information was pushed out through all CPS channels. A number of law enforcement agencies took place in the three day checks that included CPS, Edmonton Police, CN Police, Satina Police, Sheriff's Highway Patrol and members from the Alberta Transportation Vehicle Safety Branch. So just to give you some numbers and an idea there, over the three days of the check, the following results were obtained. Two hundred and twenty commercial vehicles were inspected in total, one hundred and thirty eight or sixty three percent were found to have critical defects that placed them out of service. Thirty four vehicles were found to have major defects that required attention, so they didn't need to go out of service, but they did require attention within a particular period of time. Forty five vehicles passed with no critical defects at all, just twenty one percent, and a total of a hundred and sixteen violations tickets were issued. During that check, interestingly enough, two drivers were charged with suspended driving. And one was arrested and charged with impaired driving as well. Two tractor trailer units had their registration documents and plates seized as their conditions were so unsafe, they were not even fit to be on the road at the time. So I think that's scary when you see that, when you think of large, heavy vehicles traveling on busy roadways in that type of condition. So I think that just shows the value of June as Commercial Vehicle Safety Month and the engagement of the members of the traffic unit and our partners on that. So with that, I'll conclude and we can answer questions in relation to any of those last three reports. Thank you.
There is one other quick report, which is the anti racism. And so if we could go that and if you can touch on the highlights for that, that would be great.
I have lots of money today. And well, we'll throw it over to Deputy Chief McClellan. That was a very important report to give here.
You know, there we go. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, Commission members. And thanks for the opportunity to provide some of these updates. You may recall that our commitment to dismantling anti racism aligns with our crisis service transformation. And we heard some comments made earlier by the chief and I'll build on those in a few moments. Through this work, we aim to support the CPS anti racism strategy, enhance our partnerships and service delivery, reduce demand and call volume for patrol officers, and of course, advance the CPS equity diverse and inclusion lens. Therefore, my following updates will include comments on some of those above commitments. As we heard the chair say earlier, June is Indigenous Awareness Month as well as National Pride Month. And you heard the chiefs talk about some of the events that we participated in. I'll just add some additional pieces. And that's on June twenty first, National Indigenous Peoples' Day and during Aboriginal Awareness Week, the CPS permanently raised the Treaty Seven and Madehe Nation Flags in this ceremony ceremony at our headquarters. This is a significant step for us, recognizing the nation to nation relationship our service has with Treaty Seven and the and the Madehe Nation. The flags display that we are all treaty people and that all First Nations, Madehe and Nenuet people belong here. On June third, I think the chief mentioned this, but I'll just say it again, the Indigenous Relations Team and the Yard Team will be will be raising the Yard TP for participation in the July first power. The the pride flag has been raised all month. Our diversity resource team members attended numerous events, including events with members from our G S, our G S D board. As a side note, we are very pleased to announce that we now have a gender neutral washroom that now exists at headquarters. And in July, pride awards will be given out at Nashville North during stampede. And just as an important side note, Inspector Avril Martin was recently honored to be recognized by the Immigrant Outreach Society and East African Youth Panel for her dedication to building bridges between the community and the Calgary Police Service. The volunteer appreciation awards occurred on June eighteenth, where many individuals and organizations were supported and recognized, including our partner, Action Dignity. We're all very proud of Inspector Martin. With respect to indigenous training and education, we continue our path to both truth and reconciliation by investing in into indigenous education that is focused on truth and integrates traditional ways of knowing, thinking and being into our service model delivery. This training is mandatory for all members. And on June first, the service launched Module Three of Fifteen, which focuses on Treaty Seven. With respect to anti racism training and education, the CPS anti racism webinars continue to be delivered to the front to the districts and the frontline officers. These began in April of this year and will continue through to June of next year. Further learnings will continue through focus groups, group meetings, podcasts, articles and books. Dr. Quazy, as you know, is one of our consultants who has been hired to assist us with this work, is delivering an anti racism workshop to the ELTS L T on July fourth. And this same workshop will be delivered to the commission on in September. Both external and internal anti racism action committees will be resuming for a second term. Crisis response. You may recall that I've talked about the implementation of a project team. And we're very fortunate to have one of the business strategists from the city embedded in our team who was co located with us at headquarters. The team has been meeting and corresponding with numerous partners locally, nationally and internationally. We've learned many lessons and have been applying these lessons to several to our several projects. The discussions validated much of the research report as well as the engagement sessions conducted in Calgary around the need for improved triage systems, implementation of a mobile crisis response and the need for crisis stabilization facilities. Crisis intake. As you're aware, and the chief spoke to this earlier, one of these initiatives includes the pilot intake project currently underway in C nine one one, which has two one one located in the C nine one one center. We're very fortunate to have amazing partnerships with Glenda Salin from C nine one one and Robin Romano from the two on one distress center. Since February, this project has achieved much success in that it has diverted over four hundred calls from C nine one to two on one, which impacts the frontline police service directly with a more appropriate response. The top three calls for service types are similar to previous months. These include interpersonal conflicts, check on welfare and mental health concerns. The next step in this work includes a training component by engaging an external consultant to assist us with change management, the review of policies and procedures and to conduct conduct training for all call takers and supervisors and dispatchers in the nine one one center. As of July first, two on one will be adding additional crisis call takers to C nine one one, supported, of course, by our C sub funding for additional coverage. As you've heard me share in the past, the ultimate goal is to have that fourth option for citizens when they call C nine one one. Police, fire, EMS or crisis assistance. Currently, this pilot project is scheduled to conclude at the end of the at the end of this year. Every month are ongoing evaluations and there will be a final evaluation at the end of the year conducted by an external consultant. With respect to mobile crisis response, some of you have heard me refer to this in the past as the hot teams. Health workers, outreach worker, police. I've been convinced that we need to call it something else. So 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 and that may in fact change in the future. We have acknowledged, of course, that we may not be the best responders to some calls for service, particularly those citizens requiring assistance with regards to mental health and addictions. We are committed to ensuring citizens get the right resources at the right time in the right place. Our project team has undergone undertaken extensive research, benchmarking and community engagement in Q one of this year. We have reviewed the research report authored by Policywise and the Center for Suicide Prevention, which was published in December twenty twenty one, which we share. Engagement recently with forty seven community organizations revealed that responding to people in crisis in the community still remains a gap in our current system. As a result, and funded through the this the Community Safety Investment Framework, I'm extremely pleased to share that our project team and the chief spoke to this at the beginning, has prepared a call for funding proposal, a letter of intent for organizations to deliver mobile crisis response services. The Calgary Community Crisis Response Pilot Project will provide support to people, to persons in crisis by dispatching a team of two support workers. This team will include any two of the following. A person who's educated in crisis response, crisis response and deescalation. A peer support worker or person with lift experience and or a support worker with medical or health training. The Calgary Police Service will offer support and will have dedicated plainclothes police officers assigned to provide direct responses assistance to the Calgary Community Response Teams for the first three or four months of the pilot project. That's to ensure there's a seamless transition that we have enhanced partnerships, that we talk about communication, we there's some systems navigation. Those workers understand how the calls come through the two one one, one, two, three, four center, the nine one one. And eventually, the goal, of course, is for these teams to be community led with the support of us and all of the other partners that we have at the table. This posting went out yesterday and will be accessible for two weeks. Today, a matrix for selection and scoring is currently being created for selection by the Calgary Police Service, the city and A H S. These teams will respond to citizens who are vulnerable, are suffering from mental health and or addictions, possible checks on welfare, those kinds of calls. We are hoping, and I'm optimistic, to deploy these teams by the end of September, maybe October. At this time, the pilot will be for six months. And again, we will have an external consultant hired to conduct the evaluation. Many of you are familiar with the doubling of our PAC teams. An evaluation of the PAC team is scheduled for the summer. The evaluation will help position PAC for success as an important part of this crisis response continuum. To assist us with all of this, we are having a smudge ceremony for crisis transformation tomorrow. Traditional knowledge keeper, Mr. Gerald Ogier, will lead us through a smudge session and traditional indigenous ceremony to bless our crisis transformation work. Members from the CPS and City Projects Team are invited, as are members from our Indigenous Advisory Circle. And finally, our town halls. We committed to planning and hosting town halls in the communities in May and June. We held four public town halls in each quadrant of the city. My Bureau Leadership Team, along with frontline members from Deputy Toffix's area and subject matter experts from Deputy Cook's area, presented on topics such as finance, information and technology, audit and risk management, body worn camera, shootings, community violence and safety, community and youth services section, anti racism strategy and crisis transformation and call response. The town halls were very well received and often exceeded the allotted time due to some amazing dialogue from the community. These themes, the themes discussed centered around everything from school resource officer review to crisis transformation, crime prevention and intervention programs for youth, particularly around those youths vulnerable to gun and gang violence. We followed up with many people afterwards and received great suggestions. We intend on revisiting the hall, the town halls again in the fall with an emphasis on meeting with other groups. At one of these town halls, a request from community members asked us for assistance in speaking with their children about guns and gangs. We partnered with the Center for Newcomers and Youth Link, who assisted us in creating a training program. The material has also been provided to members of the advisory boards for additional culturally relevant input and feedback. The information and feedback taken from this was great and has been used in fine tuning with specific information relevant to parents. Our diversity resource team is delivering this training with Youth Link and people from the Center for Newcomers. That will happen later this summer. Thank you to those commission members who attended our town halls as well as community members. Thank you, Chair. Those are my updates.
Thank you very much. Lots of material there. And so I'll turn it over to Commission for questions. Okay, I'm trying to watch both sides and get them first. Commissioner John, please.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Chief, and all the presenters. So my question is about that LRT or Calgary Transit Safety Initiative. So other than the operational collaboration for some specific timeframe or specific target, is there any kind of general kind of share of training resources or mental health support or other kind of supporting mechanism between Calgary Police and Calgary Transit Peace Officers, does it mean? Anything?
We've had ongoing relationships, obviously, with Calgary Transit. And over the years, I would say things have ebbed and flowed in terms of safety and public perceptions of safety around transit. And I think there is a need and we're having discussions right now about how we stay integrated for the long term and because this is something that doesn't go away. And when you look at the issue of the building of the Green Line coming up slated for, I think, twenty twenty six, it's slated to open. I mean, the transit resources and the importance of protecting transit and ensuring people feel safe is actually going to get more important, not less. And so there, you know, I think the the collaboration between the police service and transit about transit safety can't be sort of project specific. It's got to be an ongoing program. And so there's discussions right now about what that could look like going forward. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah, so because operationally, I think it is more like tactical power, but basically if the Calgary Transit Peace Officers can take on some, how to say, some non police essential like functionality or if they can do that, it actually frees the time and effort from CPS itself. So I I feel like they could take on more work if they are properly probably even they're better trained and then get better support from CPS. So I'm not sure that's the right thing to do or is something like we should even be careful, more careful about that.
Well, we're certainly looking at best practices in terms of how transit safety is being done in other locations as well. You know, we're having discussions about integrated teams and this type of thing. I think at the end of the day, you know, the transit peace officers there perform a very important function. But what happens is when they run across situations there where there's violence or somebody needs to be arrested, they end up too having to call the police to carry out the criminal code investigation. And I think that happens enough that it's just useful to have the two teams working in unison all the time because I think both functions are really quite important. I think, you know, it's it's not just a situation where and things have gotten more difficult. I think there was a time where when there was disorder on the transit property, you just needed a presence. But I think things have gotten much more complex in terms of people's needs and why they're in those spaces. And it all ties back to to the importance of the partnerships and collaboration because it can be something as simple as, you know, back earlier in the year when we saw the the problems that we saw with the encampments in Dermot Baldwin Way. You know, so you had individuals there who were involved in criminal activity who were controlling access to those resources and in effect pushing people out somewhere else. And so that somewhere else at times turned out to be public spaces, some of them being transit. And then if you think about policy decisions, you know, having wifi available all the time and this type of thing for transit users. And that's a good idea and that's very helpful to a lot of people, but it's also very convenient for individuals who may not be around the shelters or places where they might otherwise be to be able to access their wifi. And certainly when the library was closed down, the library is very good about supporting people in that way. But when the library was closed down and other public facilities, even the access to wifi wasn't there. So it's it's a very complicated problem that drives people into those spaces. But I think it's because of the the pandemic and the ongoing nature of it. I think people have become quite established in those spaces now. And I think it's it's proving to be a little bit more difficult of a problem. So anyway, the the collaboration between police and transit, I don't think, you know, police can just pop in every once in a while. I think it's got to be an ongoing integrated approach to dealing with that. That actually works with partners as well to be able to find out what is, what are, what are the things that are going on in the community that are sort of driving people into those spaces and what might help move them out of them. Thank you. That's who, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell.
Thanks very much, Chair. I have a question in section five point two, section five point four and section five point five. So the first one, with respect to the pandemic related protests, you will have seen that Ottawa Police are preparing for demonstrations and won't be tolerating signs or gestures that are homophobic, misogynistic and or racist in a public place. Are we preparing for a return of the large demonstrations by these particular groups in Calgary?
So we are monitoring sort of the usual channels where we get indications as to sort of plans and that type of thing. So I think a lot of people from around the country, a lot of those activists are actually planning on on descending on Ottawa. So Ottawa is sort of a focal point for Canada Day, but I would think that locally, we'll still see some activity. We've continued to see activity even since things have abated just at a lower level. So yes, we continue to plan for, we have a large slate of events actually through the Canada Day time. And but nothing in terms of large-scale events around, you know, freedom or anti-vaccine or anything like that are anticipated at this point.
Thank you. With respect to Section five point four, probably this is probably for you, Deputy Chief Cook. It's about canine contacts. How do we track canine unit contacts with community members?
Specifically, not my bureau.
Sorry.
So I don't know if, Chief, have you got a better, like, I know all canine contacts are documented and reported. They go through a screening process first and foremost with the handler, the trainer, and then the supervisor of the area, right up to the section commander. And then from there, there's either, whether it's a complaint or training or remediation, but every bite report is tracked and reported.
But we don't, thank you for that, but do we publish it in a manner similar to the way that we publish info posts and the other accountability data?
It shows up in our use of force report. The canine contacts are one of the things that we track on there. I think that's helpful color, and I sort of looked at Deputy Cook because he used to work back in the day. It was a hundred years ago, but roughly.
Oh, we saw the picture.
Well, then you would know. But yeah, but I think the area, the section right now too, actually, the group actually debriefs each bite to see what learnings there is from those. And obviously, you know, if there's a problematic bite that comes forward through the review process, just as it would any other sort of use of force that doesn't pass the initial review test. But I think even beyond that, I think the section does a really quite a good job of debriefing any sort of canine contact to talk about what happened and what are the learnings from that. And there's a pretty robust process, some very strong supervision in there, and they do a pretty good job of actually reviewing what's occurring in real time.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Chief McClellan, this one's coming for you. Really pleased to see the RFP released for organizations to deliver that mobile crisis response work. Will be good to see what community members and what organizations apply to provide that much-needed service at the structure. And, you know, whatever you need to help deploy those teams in Q three and Q four of this year, the commission is here to support you in that. It's that mobile crisis response support will be critical to delivering much of the dedicated care. It's really about care and compassion within the community. But you also know my favorite topic. Well, I have several, but you know my favorite one, and it's race-based data. So Toronto released their data, and they were forced to do that by the Ontario Human Rights Commission. These data merely reflected what Black people have known and have said for decades. The finding of note in the Toronto Report is probably finding number three A on page fifty-five of the report in the section on use of force. So here, Black people were two-point-three times more likely than white people to have firearms pointed where no weapons were perceived. This compares to white people who were two-time, two-point-seven times more likely than Black people to have physical or other use, other force used where no weapons are perceived. So in terms of being able to have a similar inspiration in Alberta, Alberta's government flushed the bill that would have allowed for race-based data collection. We will have no legislative inspiration for collection of race-based data. But we know that it can never be said that race doesn't factor into a case, having seen what we saw in Toronto. We know in Calgary, we don't have a credible data collection process. We don't have a consistent data collection process across all bureaus and areas within the service. But we are doing it. We're doing it in spite of a lack of legislative obligation. We're doing it because it's the right thing to do. We're doing it because it fulfills our commitment on anti-racism. Other services in Alberta may not see or have that moral obligation. So how is Calgary leading this work in Alberta? And in what ways can Calgary establish parameters for this work in the absence of a structured manner to collect, communicate, and act on race-based data policing?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Campbell. It was an interesting one for sure. I'll just start there and then maybe I'll toss it over to Deputy McClellan to follow up. Just a couple of your comments there about, you know, not having a credible or consistent. I guess, I think we're establishing a credible process there in the sense that we're working with the Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police and also with Statistics Canada, as you know, to try to make sure we enhance the credibility and the reliability and usability of the data so that we actually collect it in a consistent way that we can actually make comparisons down the line. Because I think in the past, that's been one of the biggest challenges is, and it's the same as the the data points that Staff Sergeant Huskins spoke about there. If we don't have consistency, it's going to be of limited usefulness other than locally. So I think in terms of credible, I think we're working to the right place there. In terms of consistent, of course, we've just started, and there's a lot to learn in relation to this huge public policy shift, as you know well, from, you know, from the notion that we should not be collecting race-based data because it stigmatizes and that type of thing, to the movement to recognize that if we're not connecting, collecting and reporting on it, then we're not really providing good inputs to decision-making around public policy. So I think, I think it's been a pretty big shift. I think, you know, how are we leading though? I think we have come out and made our commitments to anti-racism. And one of those was, we said, based on, in fact, recommendations from the Ontario Human Rights Commission, that we needed to do that. And so we're probably leading in the area in terms of how far along we are. I don't know of another service currently that posts race-based data around street checks. Now, I know that we still talk about how we, you know, how we improve on that, but I think we've got the baseline there, and I think that's a good piece. And I think we definitely can improve on it. The other thing that I think is really important is the work with community around discussions about what's to be collected and probably more importantly, as to how it's to be collected. Because I know we've had discussions with the commission to talk about the fact that it's not, it's much more complex than what we sort of initially, when we first think of it, it sounds like quite an easy thing to do. But again, we've seen with a lot of the databases where we see multiple races attached to individuals. And so suddenly, some of that data becomes so messy and noisy that none of it really does much good. So I know that we have had our foot on the gas and we have had some prodding from you and the rest of the commission, which I think is really good. But I think, again, there's some complexity around it, but I think we are leading in the area with the commitment. I think we do want to bring that out. Of note, I haven't had a chance to go fully through the Toronto Report, and we're looking at it. And because we will certainly be in a position shortly to be able to come out with data as well. We've had some really good discussions internally about what's the best way to release our data. Do we provide an analysis ahead of time, or do we release the data in its raw form for people to analyze? And there's a couple of different, you know, considerations and things to do, and we'll certainly have more dialogue with the commission around that as we move forward. But I think we have led in this area, and I think we remain committed to doing it. And I think it's the right thing to do. As you say, I think there is that moral imperative in relation to this. And so I look forward to being able to see what comes of that down the line and to be able to work with that data and the community and to improve the broader system. I'll pass it over to Deputy McClellan for her thoughts.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chief. Excellent comments, and thanks, Chair, for your questions. So we have been in regular contact with Toronto and Ottawa. Manager Rebecca Davidson has got some great contacts out there, and we've been talking about their communication, their release of their information, and obviously, some lessons learned. And so as this commission knows, I think it was last month, we brought forward a very preliminary analysis of our data, but we recognize that we need to do a deeper dive. And we look, we need to, actually, we're going to consult with a third party who will assist us with looking at the methodology and the findings. And we actually hope to come back and have that report hopefully in September, if not October at the latest, so that we can share it with the commission and obviously with the public and the communities. As the chief said, we are nothing but committed. As we also know, we've had lots of conversations around, you know, Stats Canada, and it's going to be probably another year before some of those parameters come out. But we have shown our commitment. We have moved forward. We have made some internal changes with respect to our frontline officers and some of the questions that they ask and how the report processing unit actually follows up and confirms and asks some additional questions around the findings that those officers report. So hopefully, that helps.
Thanks very much, Chief, and thanks very much, Deputy Chief. I certainly appreciate that. I think in terms of leadership, given that we don't have the legislative inspiration, as I'll call it, I think there is a, an opportunity for us to provide some leadership, particularly at the federal level, where there is also an absence of race-based data, along with other demographic factors, particularly with respect to gender and sexual and sexual identity, which need to be captured to recognize the changing plurality of our community and the impact that policing has on those individuals and their communities. But thank you. You know that question's coming from me every week, twice on Sunday. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mallon.
Thank you. I've got a few questions on the different reports, but beg your leave because I'm representing three people. First of all, much to her chagrin, Commissioner Siddiqui can't talk. So I've got her speaking notes here, and Commissioner Rossell also was unable to put forward her questions. So between the three of us, I might have quite a few here. So first of all, since we were just speaking about a community policing, you were speaking about LRT stations. On the community level, there's many communities for twenty-five years. I can remember communities complaining about bus shelters being trashed every two weeks or something. And we just wondered if the CROs and the transit and police and maybe neighborhood leaders at one of the town halls that we were at, the neighbors were saying, we know who's doing this stuff. We want to work with you. So is there any concerted effort to kind of bring those people together to try and identify who's doing this so repeatedly?
So that's a great question. I know that this is ongoing work for the CROs, and I wish Deputy Toffix was available to be able to speak a little further into that because this is, this is project work for them. This is ongoing work. I think one of the things we're seeing, and we hear it fairly often right now around property crime. And so, again, coming out of COVID because of Regina versus Jordan and capacity issues in the court system, there has been a triaging, there's been, had to be a triaging of cases that were backed up. And so, of course, you know, for reasons that all of us can understand, violent crime was triage as having a higher priority than property crime. Property crime, where perhaps, you know, there's a break-in into somebody's home, would have a higher priority than, you know, stealing sunglasses out of somebody's car. And then, and then I think damage to public property like bus shelters, as you're saying, was probably lower down. So I think there's been a gap in time where we are probably right. I think some people probably know who broke into their garage and stole their bike. They probably know who's damaging the bus shelters and that type of thing. I'm not sure that even when the police provide the police response, the standard police response, be it arrest and that sort of thing, I don't think a lot of those cases were going to court. And so as a result of that, there's been this fairly lengthy period of time where there may not be the same level of accountability or consequences for that type of behavior. So it's not so much that community leaders need to come together or that, you know, at the neighborhood level, or that, you know, citizens need to provide more information. I think, I suspect they probably are doing that. I think it's about the system coming back together and becoming realigned. You know, we talked recently about specific communities that have specific vulnerabilities. So I think of, you know, the East Village and, you know, some of the challenges that some of the businesses are facing. And you think of the grocery store down there. If the area was to lose the grocery store, that would be devastating for all the economic investment that's been done in the East Village. And so part of, you know, some of the strategies that we're talking about now are things like community impact assessments about why there needs to be priority placed within the system, even a system that is not operating at full capacity, why there needs to be follow-through in certain areas because of certain vulnerabilities like this. So these are some of the discussions that are happening. I think the homeless task force, the provincial homeless task force, to do also to deliver their findings here in the next short while. So there's a number of pieces of work that are ongoing. I think that all contribute to this conversation. But it's very much a systems conversation coming out of COVID and making sure that everything's aligned again, because I think it's not been during COVID.
The next issue, you mentioned the vehicle, commercial vehicle checks with pretty horrendous results, actually. And that's done once a year for three days, I think, in June. Does the number of problems uncovered, does that not suggest that somebody somewhere should be instituting? I would think that the provincial government would have an interest in this. They talk a lot about safety, especially since that crash in Humboldt, that like three days a year, people will have no impetus to take better care of their trucks, right? I mean, and that is a high danger. Is there any interest, I guess, in expanding or putting more checks on the road for that?
That's a great question, and I probably should have given better context to that. So although this month is Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Month, that's ongoing work around the province. And so it's not that it only happens on those couple of days. It's really higher profile and to get the messaging out so that there's an awareness. The numbers, frankly, weren't surprising. Like, each year when that's done, the numbers tend to be shocking every time. But you would be familiar with, if you're traveling on the highways in the province and that type of thing, where you see, you know, if the sign's up on the side of the highway, commercial vehicles have to pull in for inspection. The province does actually do quite a bit of work. They've got the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Unit. And then through the cities and stuff, it's done in the RCMP as well. So this is just the month of the year. There's, you know, I'll forget which months, but there's months that are seatbelt enforcement. There's months that are motorcycle safety. That's generally May. But the work itself is ongoing work all year long.
Well, it is kind of shocking that they're in such bad shape. Okay, in the investigative report, one thing that you mentioned was is that there's fourteen investigative cases per staff person, per officer. And I was wondering, that kind of information is often really good for budget if you're looking at workload and monetizing it. So is fourteen a lot versus some standard of rightness? Or how does that stack up? Is that reasonable for a person to be able to close cases with that low?
I think whenever you're dealing with victimization and important topics like this, it's always important to try to provide the best care and the best resourcing to such an important topic. It's hard for me to say. I can tell you that our investigators are beyond capacity within that unit. When we think about being trauma-informed in the way we approach and empowering our victims, it takes a lot of deliberate effort and for all the right reasons. So regrettably, though, I've said before, our investigators in that unit are very similar to other investigators throughout our service. There are many areas of the service that we are at or beyond capacity to meet our mandates.
Do we have any benchmarks with other services, or are there any accepted standards?
There are certain provincial standards in around major case management and response and investigations. We had to take a, one of the positions about two years ago in response to the unfounded work that came out of, I believe, Eastern Canada to make more in around quality assurance. So it's embedded into the unit. But that is one of the positions that we're looking to replace with an investigator if we can through this new or this next growth cycle. As far as your benchmarking, I'm not aware, but that is something I can certainly follow up through the executive officer and Heather and get back to you on that for sure.
It certainly is a good story to back up needs for resources, though, right? I mean, because it's tangible. People, I think, respond better to, we need more when you say an investigator should have ten or whatever it is, and they've got fourteen, and our closure rate's not so great or whatever.
I can tell you too that I know for a fact that many investigators would just appreciate you asking that question. Because I can tell you, our investigators want to provide the best quality service to victims. I think as we've reported to this commission, again, we're immensely proud of the work that we do within trauma-informed space. And we couldn't do this work without our community partners. And I think, and I'm not sure you always get to best practice, leading practice. But I can tell you, it's something that we strive for every day with our community partners and with the investigators within the unit.
Just a quick tack on there. I know that there's been lots of work done around math and modeling and stuff like that to talk about um. You know, how many police and how many police cars does it take to provide a seven-minute response time to um, to uh, priority one calls and this type of thing in the city? So there is modeling around that, but I'm not aware. We did look at that at one time. They're trying to find modeling that would say how many cases per investigator. So I'm not I'm not aware of that existing actually anywhere just yet. What we tend to do is benchmark against ourselves, like as the city grows, you know, like over the last number of years, how is the caseload? Um, we've seen uh, fairly significant increases in um, um, reporting across the province for sexual assault cases. Particularly around the time of the Me Too movement and this type of thing. And a lot of that was driven by historical cases reporting. And so for um, for uh, sexual assault investigators, there those numbers went up. Recently, you're probably aware that the uh, Canadian military, one of the recommendations from the report was that those reports uh, of sexual violence not be investigated by the military, but rather go to the public police. And so there was some transitioning of files and then some looking into, you know, moving forward the modeling. What might that look like depending on where military facilities are around the country? So these are things that are being looked at right now as certain orders of government trend, you know. Um, transfer responsibility for um, some of this work back and forth. And it's a lot of it ends up falling to the municipal police uh, of jurisdiction. So um, but also then benchmarking against other similar-sized agencies and cities and stuff. Those are things we definitely can do.
And in the pharmacy um, problem, pharmacy robbery problem. Uh, recently, a week or so ago, I think CPS released pictures of two people. And we're just interested whether or not that got any useful tips, or is that a useful thing to put out there?
It is one hundred percent a useful thing to put out. It's it's quite often how it's those public releases that can move an investigation forward. Because it's we're never surprised with the amount of uh, recognition. Whether it's from a community member, a teacher, somebody recognizes somebody, and it's that little piece of information. Or I saw that vehicle, or there was distinctive markings on the vehicle, or there was damage on the vehicle. What it does, it just provides us with additional information to follow up. I can tell you, we don't, that is not our first. We do a lot of investigative steps before we get to that public release, but it's very, very helpful.
And finally, this is, I think, for Lori on the training, um, or or maybe uh, Deputy McClellan. You you mentioned you were rolling out Module Three of the uh, EDI training, yeah, for. Uh, and I wondered if if that same modules are presented in the recruit classes.
Hey Commissioner, um, the recruits go through separate training, uh, and this will be built upon. So when they go into the PTO program and then into in-service, they'll they'll actually take part in this training as well.
So do they get some in in?
In recruit class, they get a whole dedicated module. The diversity team team come in and do face-to-face training. Um, so the e-learning they go through, as uh, as Deputy McClellan mentioned, it's a new initiative. We rolled out three months ago. And each month for the next fifty months, we will roll out episodic learning, a different topic specifically. That will then be followed up with twenty hours face-to-face in classroom learning uh, to build upon a lot of the topics that actually are mentioned in there.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, uh, Commissioner, thank you for carrying out that on behalf of the others. Commissioner North Pagan, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to expand off the modules. Are these the ones that we're talking about that were created by uh, or actually had a uh, hand with Constable Chamberlain and Constable Thompson?
That's exactly right.
Okay, um, for that, I'm going to ask another question on on that. It would really benefit this commission if we actually got to, you know, have a look at those modules for ourselves. Because there is such a large EDI portion in there. I'm not just saying that because I helped to approve the modules. You know, if there is some aspect to that, that this commission would largely benefit from. And actually seeing maybe a presentation, asking some questions on it.
Sure, Commissioner. I believe we're actually in the process of creating a sharing agreements, then we can share that training as well as some of the other EDI training we have available where with.
Absolutely, because at at this level, we we need that kind of training if we're going to have any kind of effect towards CPS.
Absolutely.
Because I've seen those modules, and I'm going to say this, I backed it up, and I've heard the researchers out there. A lot of people don't support online more uh, learning. But what, why I back this is because we have to start with what we already have. We can't be reinventing the wheel. There's not enough time for that. This is why I put my, yeah, I back this 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 project. So with that being said, I talked to you, say, over the weekend, they're absolutely ecstatic by, you know, being involved. Um, Indigenous youth are rarely asked to, you know, and be involved. So I'm going to tell you, you made their day. Just give us a, uh, you know, congratulations to Inspector Martin for on behalf of Commission. Because she carries a lot for CPS and I understand what she's going through and congratulations to her. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lynch Proctor.
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to ask a couple of follow-up questions, um, and asking the investigative question a little bit differently for Deputy Chief Cook. In terms of resourcing, do you, does CPS have enough resources to really spend time on prevention activities? I appreciate that domestic violence is not trending up on a five-year average, but reporting's trending up, child abuse is trending up. Um, I think the the province has has also reported that restraining order applications continue to trend up. Um, all of which would put strain on your existing resources, and I am thinking about the budget. Um, and whether or not this is an area that we should be focused on.
Uh, I think with crime prevention, I think it's it's a key core responsibility for all of our members in their interactions with community and with victims. Uh, specific to crime prevention, we have very few dedicated resources. You would think we would have more specifically for this. Uh, we don't. But having said that, it is the responsibility within certain mandates and units. For example, whether it's uh, within the robbery and working with the pharmacies or with the province. Or with Deputy Toffick, for example, today, uh, tried to advocate and work with government to implement crime prevention programs across the province. Because I do think what's, although we have local contacts, what's relevant here is probably happening the same up in Edmonton and across the province. So um, I think, to be honest with you, no, we don't have enough dedicated resources into crime prevention. In my opinion, the chief may correct me. But having said that, like, it's my responsibility, along with everybody else within my bureau's responsibility in around crime prevention. Uh, crime prevention was within uh, Deputy McLona's bureau, and I'll turn it over to Deputy McLona. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, thanks for the question and uh, thanks, Paul. Uh, you covered most of what I was thinking as well. So Chair, uh, Commissioner, to answer your question, I'm authorized for four. I've got one. And uh, Constable Nick Wilshire does an amazing job on behalf of the service. And uh, he's involved in many prevention programs with many, many numerous partners. Um, and in fact, was at our one of our latest town halls, and there was lots of questions around this as well. Of course, like Paul says, uh, crime prevention is all of our responsibilities, and he works very closely with the CROs in all of the districts. But um, it's one of those things that, again, is a capacity issue, but we do what we can with the resources that we have. And uh, you know, things like the pharmacy robberies and some of those other things that we heard about earlier today, uh, we're involved in that as much as we can.
Thanks. I appreciate that. And I had um, one other follow-up uh, question for you, uh, Deputy McClellan. And it was around the um, the RFP for the six-month pilot project that you talked about for the mobile crisis response. Will that come with um, additional training required? Um, for you, you mentioned that there's two team members um, from the, you know, crisis response perspective to along with one CPS member. So is that going to require additional training for for your members and recruits coming in?
Thanks very much. Excellent question. Um, with the team having doing their travels, uh, both locally, nationally and internationally. Uh, one of the let key lessons learned and one of the highlights is that training is key. It is number one. So we're actually with with some of the partnerships that we've got, they're sharing a lot of material with us. We're actually hiring a couple of consultants from different areas who are coming to. So as uh, Bishop North Pagan said earlier, we're not reinventing the wheel. Um, some of it obviously will count, will CPS it. And uh, but we're working with our partners um, and uh, training will be key for both uh, the our partners who will come on as well as our members. And then we obviously hope to take that further as we kind of get our feet under us. But um, absolutely priority number one, and we will be taking, uh, you know, I think they've estimated five weeks. We're hoping to maybe go three, three and a half weeks so that we can get them out the door for my late September, October deadline.
I could just tack on, uh, Commissioner Lynch Proctor, I think our our vision of this is that. It not be uh, like a civilian crisis response that sits outside of the broader um, response. I think the community response needs to be integrated from the lower acuity calls where there is no um, you know, um, mentions of weapons or violence or whatever. But also, we want to make sure that they understand how those calls come in. Because when when people want crisis response, they end up calling two-one-one-nine-one-one or the the non-emergency line. And then also making sure that if calls have to go back and forth, because they could. There could be calls that the police get dispatched to that when they get there are quite stable and somebody else could be brought in, and so that they could transition that way. And similarly, um, a non-police response could be dispatched. And they could get there and recognize that there needs to be a police response here. So I think it needs to be integrated. And then when you talk about governance of it all, and also uh, even the data. And and how the reporting's going to go and who has access to all of that so that we can actually see the trends and. And uh, and and make sure that we're collecting and able to analyze all of that. I think that's got to go. So there's going to be a strategic view over this. It's not a matter of just um, having an entity, just go do something. That something's got to be well-integrated with the vision for crisis response, and it's got to be something that actually moves the needle across the board, so.
I have uh, one last, hopefully, quick question, um, just with respect to following on with um, Commissioner Lynch Proctor's question. I know we're we're running a little late on time here, but um, you mentioned that the pilot for nine-one, nine-one-one and two-one-one um, is up at the end of the year. Um, and I guess my question is, and maybe can't be answered, but if it's a pilot to the end of the year, if it's successful. What will it take to carry on and make it sustainable long-term?
Great question, Chair. Thank you. And uh, I was just thinking about this as we were talking earlier. And when we went down the journey of our partnership with the the CSF, I think I was asked before, what's one of my biggest concerns? And it was around the sustainability of funding. So just like the pilot projects and these other crisis response teams and. Uh, Commissioner Lynch Proctor, just to your previous question, um, the the one of the, if it was one of the. I think it might have been down east or maybe someone in somewhere in the States. When they first started this kind of a pilot project, it was three and a half years. So we're putting it together for six months, or C nine-one-one, two-one-one is six months just because of funding at the moment. And uh, of course, that's probably the biggest piece. As you heard me say earlier, there's huge successes in this. We're very optimistic about the successes with the crisis response teams as to as to how we're going to deliver different services to 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 um. Community members in in the very near future here. So it's really, it's all around funding.
Good. Thank you very much, and more to come on that. Um, with that, thank you for those reports. Okay, um, the um, we're moving on now from the um, CPS. And and thank you again for all of the information that you've provided. It was um, very helpful, excellent, and lots of uh, lots of things to consider as we move forward um, over the next number of months. The agenda items next are the ones from the commission itself. Um, there are a number of reports that have been posted, and I'll ask if um, there are any in particular uh, that need to be spoken about. So there's um, the CAPG uh, update, which has been posted, uh, and AAPG as well. Uh, are there any additional comments to make? Not from CAPG and from you. Thank you very much. Um, and anything from the Alberta Response Team for Commissioner North Pagan?
Nothing, nothing to report today, Chair.
Um, with that, I think that that is the end of the presentations and reports for today. Anything else I've missed? No. Um, so with that, um, we'll now invite public guests, guests who've registered to speak, um, to do so. Uh, and uh, just a quick comment about the process here. One of our staff will invite you to unmute yourself one at a time. Um, we've recently changed our practices around public participation to provide more opportunity for people to get a response to their questions or concerns. We've also tried our best to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who register to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of the commission or the CPS having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We also cannot discuss any complaint about a specific employee of the service or interaction with the police. If you would like to discuss a complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact our public complaint director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section. And finally, a reminder to members of the media, we'll hear from the public first, and then we'll hold a media availability for you after adjourning the public meeting. So with that, I will ask for the first speaker to please be put through. Thank you, Chair. I will invite Alicia Jordan to please go ahead. She's been cued to unmute.
Perfect. So today I just want to talk briefly about leadership and the fundamentals of leadership. So for a system like the CPC and CPS to work, it must be respected by the community and by its own employees and workers. Respect is earned by communicating values to both workers and the public, setting clear expectations and goals. And holding people accountable to those stated values and expectations. As a group, the CPC has failed to communicate its values to the public. It has failed to set clear expectations and achievable goals with its employees, and it has failed to create a culture of hard work, accountability, and pride. I will be using the recent implementation of the CPC directive as the primary example of these fundamental leadership flaws. However, I would like to acknowledge that there are many other examples to draw from. The failure to communicate to the public and officers in a timely manner and provide a reasonable amount of time for a transition period. Following the announcement of its directive was a fundamental flaw in the planning and approach by the CPC. This flaw was enhanced when it became clear that the CPC had failed to ensure that the chief of police was even present in province during the announcement of the directive. And following some very public media interviews, it soon became altogether clear that the CPC had even failed to get its own police chief on board with its directive. This was a fundamental flaw which forced a direct confrontation between the CPC, CPS, and police union. Police Union President John Orr was successfully and skillfully able to use this failure of leadership. To demonstrate to the entire city that you do not really need to attain a leadership position in the CPC to effectively act as its board chair and issue commands. The CPC was forced to back down on its publicly stated goals, which weaken community trust and the ability of its members to effectively implement its own directives. And I have a feeling that the public may never be made fully aware of the true extent of the concessions made to the police union during this time. However, the fundamental leadership failure here is one of values. Ms. Cornet, when you as board chair failed to hold people in the CPC and CPS accountable for their actions. It communicates a lesson to the public and to all employees of the CPC and CPS. And that lesson is that you yourself do not believe in the values that you set. And if you as leader do not believe in those values, then why should anyone else? People do not often like to be held accountable, and it can be an uncomfortable and difficult thing to do as a leader. But I can tell you that failing to hold individuals accountable is one of the fastest ways to destroy a team. Managing expectations, clear communication, setting achievable goals. Those are fundamental leadership skills that the CPC has consistently failed to demonstrate to the public. What people within the CPC and CPS deserve from their leaders is a job in which they can contribute to a shared vision. With clear expectations set for their work and a culture of hard work, accountability, and pride. Because the fact is, leaders who are not effective are leaders who are replaceable. So I strongly recommend that you and all the other leaders in this room. Take your upcoming three-month-long summer break from public meetings to think long and hard about the skills you need to demonstrate moving forward as leaders in this city.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Jordan, for these comments. Uh, we've made notes, and I have made notes and appreciate your taking the time to participate and share your thoughts with us. Thank you. Can you please put through the next caller?
Next speaker is Taylor McNally. Please go ahead, Taylor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, hello. Um, yeah, I usually again have a bunch of stuff prepared. Um, obviously, none of it is really heard, none of it is acted on. We're sitting here talking about community safety. Um, two hours in a meeting, going around in circles, talking about funding, talking about all these things that need to be done as if people like Bearclam Patrol are not already, already doing this work and for free. Um, but it was obviously made very clear, and it's made clear over and over again that uh, the work that actually needs to be done is continuously vilified. And uh, that was made clear through uh an eight AM tweet retweet made by Mark Neufeld, which I'm curious why nobody wants to talk about that, how the chief of police actually doxed a black activist within this city where I am still receiving death threats. I'm still receiving harassment. Um, and that post is still up. The fact that people can get away with these things, the fact that we can't even get rid of a thin blue line patch, like we are so far behind, we cannot even get past the basics of the work we need to do, that at this point, the only thing I have to say today is everybody in this room can go themselves.
Thank you for your comments. We need to be respectful in this room. I appreciate your sentiments. Um, but I think with that, we'll move on to the next caller. Thank you for those.
And the next speaker is Carrie Rutherford. Go ahead, please, Carrie.
This, did I connect?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. Um, uh, personally, I just want to, I just want to point out that um, I want to thank the CPS and the commission for keeping open and facilitating the space for public voices. It's very important, especially in the current decade. Having said that, given I know I'm already at a three minute read, I'm gonna continue here. Uh, hello, I'm Carrie Rutherford. I'll preface this by noting that I'm blind, so you might hear my iPhone reading my cue cards to me. My mother, mother's parents met in Toronto after leaving their home in England. And my father's parents were Scottish, Canadian, and German. So I am one hundred percent colonial stock born in Calgary. And that's why I'm representing the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good as a committee member on the Truth and Reconciliation Research Action Team. I'm asking the Calgary Police Commission to ensure that the Calgary Police Service, uh, sorry, I'm asking that the Calgary Police Commission to ensure that the CPS complies with the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls, and Two-Spirit Calls for Justice Number Ninety Four released on the second of June, two thousand nineteen. It is recognized that Indigenous liaison officers build relationships within Indigenous communities and districts, and that there would be less need for frontline officers there. In addition, these relationships would support and help the uh unit address and uh full finally solve these crimes perhaps. The Alliance wants to see at least, at least two ILO uh hires and two more in place in September. We believe this would support both what the US CPS needs for these cases and in the, in the Indigenous community. We met with Chief Neufeld on Monday, the thirtieth of May, and reiterated our continued request to see one ILO in each of the eight districts. In that meeting, we learned that there are barriers to recruiting to the CPS. Chief Neufeld let us know that the province had granted the use of an exception to help overcome these barriers. From the first of June to the third, our team members were honored to attend a Sutina Police Service reframing our relationships within the Indigenous Conference, which was also attended by CPS and the Calgary Justice Community. For the three days were filled with Indigenous and historical talks on honored speakers, including the Honorable Jody Wilson Raybold, the Honorable Maury Sinclair, and the Honorable Marion Butler, who wrote the Calls for Justice, and an Indigenous uh panel which described how a, a community response um, uh, unit is much superior to an incident response unit. This panel described the tool to be used by Alberta Police Services that would temporarily allow modifications to the Alberta Police recruit selection standards to meet local hiring requirements. They sent a, a letter to us with that information. And one moment. The letter was also sent to Chief Neufeld, President of the Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police. Congratulations, Chief Neufeld, on your position as president of this organization. Well done. It is good that your positive influence will be available for the Alberta Police Services. We are committed to seeing ILOs hired in each of the eight Calgary Police Districts. As we have stated many times in our presentations to the commission, this is vital. Can you please tell us what the commission? Oh, can you please tell us what the commission is doing to facilitate the CPS recruitment of Indigenous liaison officers? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rutherford, for those comments. I appreciate that. Um, I wonder, Chief, if you want to make a comment or two? Or Deputy Chief McClellan?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Thanks very much for those, uh, those comments. We're very fortunate to continue to have uh ongoing uh meetings and partnerships and relationships with the Common Alliance, who um, give us great guidance, and we have lots of good conversations. Uh, as a result of their conversations and with our Indigenous Advisory Boards, we have implemented many other initiatives um, where we have been committed to um our, our truth and reconciliation. We continue to have those conversations around the Indigenous liaison officers and, and as we've said in the past, currently, this is a capacity issue. However, we can turn, we continue to assess and reassess that ask. And um specifically with our Indigenous Advisory Board, we're looking actually to modernize those advisory boards, so um, we'll, we'll be continuing through the summer to look at that, and we're hoping in September, October, we'll be able to come back and have some different and additional ideas as to the work that we have implemented and it's shared in the past.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your comments. Um, we appreciate we've taken notes and appreciate your continued attention to this item. And can you put through the next person, please?
Next speaker is Raj Kumarkatan. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to speak on the blue patch, issues of racism, discrimination, and just to give alternative perspective. Um, my late father immigrated to the UK from India nineteen sixty-four. On one occasion, my late father was chased by members of the neo-Nazi group, the National Front, a knife to the face. In the UK, I have been chased, attacked, beaten, and surrounded on many occasions just because of my skin color and cultural background. It was not just from white people. I got from black people too. This is right wing racism. It's fair to say now I have a good understanding of discrimination. That being said, in Canada, I have suffered more discrimination and racism in ten years than any other time in my life. It's the left wing racism. All my discrimination, racism, and candor has not been with neo-Nazis or the police. Occasionally, it's been with councillors, administration, outdated union mandates. To get a case to address issues of racism and discriminatory bias, it's a dither, delay, obtuseness, it's the I don't understand, I don't believe attitude, or it's the no replies to legitimate questions. The worst part is that they will come as allies or advocates of your cause. That's the left wing racism and discrimination that is more prevalent, that frightens me more than a blue patch. It's also harder to prove. When it comes to actual issues of racism, the blue patch is the last of the worries in my community. When I spoke in January this year, I highlighted how issues of racism are better solved by the community. But it was easier for me to apply to be a special constable for the Metron Police Service in London than to be a Calgary police officer. Why is it overtly hard? I was invited to the CPS headquarters to collaborate and help and look at this issue in detail. I sincerely thank Rory Thompson for this. Some of the barriers and discrimination in place I found were nothing to do with policing. Should we not hit these issues with the same sledgehammer as we hit the blue badge issue? If we look at the police commission and look at the application criteria, it's the exact same issue. I can't meet that criteria as an immigrant despite my international experience. When I look at the commission as a male ethnic minority immigrant, I have zero representation on this board. Where is my equity? Where is my diversity? Where is my equality? Has the city of Cal- Calgary violated its own diversity inclusion framework, or does that framework only apply to females? I am the one connecting with my community. I'm the one taking out time of my day to work with the CPS on these issues, figure out actual solutions and identifying problems. I'm taking time out to speak. It's not my job to do this. I believe this job um is of the city councillors and people sitting on the commission. I have no quarrel with commission members as individuals. They are respected members of the community and noble people. My concern is with the process and not the people. If the commission is holding the police to account on issues of race and diversity and discrimination and recruitment, then it's a case of the pot corner called black. Apply the same rules to the nomination process how police commissioners are selected. It's a double standard. My attempts to get this taken seriously are not being heard. I have had similar issues when applying for jobs at sea, and I've raised some of the discrimination back in twenty eighteen to my councillor with evidence. I highlight such job requirements were not necessary and overly unreasonable to the point of being discriminatory. Despite playing evidence that there was a refusal to take it further. That was my first taste of institution racism here. But to finalize, when it comes to officers wearing the blue badge, I would like to make it known as a member of the Punjabi community, including Sikh, Hindu, and Muslims, and as someone who has suffered extreme right wing racism, the blue patch being offensive is a loss of my concerns when dealing with actual racism and discrimination. It is a distraction, and there are bigger fish to fry on this issue. It is a left wing discrimination we should be concerned with more. Doing that will take on the problems on the right. Will the chief constable lady be known to his officers that not all ethnic minorities are against a blue patch? And the views represented on social media are not all ours. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ram Kamarakatan. I appreciate those comments and that perspective. It's uh, it's very helpful to hear from different viewpoints. Um, we appreciate the time that you take both to participate this evening and other times with the CPS and very much appreciate your sharing your thoughts with us. Um, we certainly have made notes and will take those into consideration as we go forward. So thank you very much. I think we have one more person.
One more speaker. Our final speaker is Niall Latt Lajore. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, again.
I'm not gonna lie, I'm quite nervous speaking in front of all of you today. My name is Niall Latt Lajore. Um, I'm the daughter of Lajore Coingtual, who was killed in a police incident on February nineteenth. My reason for speaking in this commis- this police commissioner meeting today was to ask a few questions about some of the data that came out of Toronto, which I saw that was already addressed by some of the commission uh members. Um, I wanted to ask just a few basic questions. Um, I also want to note that I'm starting speaking at four, or I guess five twenty-eight. I'm in B C right now, um, and so I want to use the full two minutes to speak. I wanted to ask the who, what, when, where, and how. Um, if Calgary Police was going to have an investigation like the one that took place in Toronto that was forced by the uh province in Ontario, who would be in charge of the investigation? And what will be uh Calgary Police Forces, you know, actions? What would they do if the results of the investigation came out similar, if not worse than what came out of Toronto? I wouldn't be surprised if it did come out similar or worse. As um, there's been a lot of racial discrimination, there's been a lot of, you know, racial violence. There's been a lot of police mistrust in Calgary specifically. Um, I also wanted to ask when this, this investigation would take place. I would hope that it would place that it would take place sooner rather than later. Um, as you know, Toronto, you know, uh, being a good example, I'm, I'm praying that, you know, Calgary would be another good example as well. Um, and also, how will the Calgary Police Department um, ensure that race doesn't play a part in police incidents going forward? Um, I can't speak too much about the incident that happened with my father. I understand that there are certain rules uh that take place, and I'm not gonna, you know, scream at the top of my lungs right now. I understand there is a time and place, but I do have certain questions on that. Uh, how would the Calgary Police PD make sure that race doesn't play a part in, you know, police incidents? Um, because I don't think you can deny that race plays a part in police incidents because the data is there. You know, Ontario proves that, Toronto proves that. The data is there. Black people, indigenous people are systematically like attacked by police more than any other race. So we can't go denying that it doesn't happen. It happens. It's there on paper. So how is Calgary PD, uh, how is Calgary PD going to change that? What are they gonna do in Calgary? And how are they gonna encourage change in all of Alberta, in all of Cal, in all of Canada as a whole? Because it's not in one place. It's not only in Toronto. Black people are everywhere, and they're being victimized and brutalized everywhere. Indigenous people are everywhere. This is their land. This is stolen land. How are we gonna make sure that their skin color, our skin color, isn't gonna play a part in how the police see us? How am I gonna have faith in calling the police in any type of incident? After what happened to my father? And after what happened to multiple people, multiple people of color, I want to add. I also wanted to add that um, I understand that there are certain people that don't have an issue with the thin blue line, but for me specifically, the thin blue line shows pride in racism. Um, the police, they get to take off their uniform at the end of the day. I, as a black person, do not get to shed my skin. I was born in the skin. I didn't choose to. And being prideful in who I am as a person took a long time. I used to be shameful of who I was. My father taught me to be proud of who I was. But the thin blue line came as a counteraction against Black Lives Matter. Black people don't get to take off being black. Police officers get to take off the uniform and act regular. So I do have an issue with the thin blue line. And this may not be specifically directed towards you guys, but it is directed towards other people that might say, oh, you know, they don't have an issue as people of color. I have an issue as a person of color. I have an issue as a black person. I have an issue as a black person that is living every day, that is experiencing the pain and the loss that I believe came about of racial discrimination. So I would like to know the who, the what, the when, the where, and the how. Specifically, the how, the Calgary PD. How will they ensure that race does not play a factor in future police incidents? And that's all I gotta say. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I understand I am the last speaker, and I understand I am taking an extra minute. But I would like an answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Lektor. It's um, I can hear the pain and the sadness and the angst in your voice, and I will say that there are many of us that share that. Um, I appreciate the comments that you've made, and I think that those are very huge and large questions. I would like to say that the commission, um, all of the members of the commission are continually asking those questions, as is the service and the chief and the executive team of the service are always asking those questions. Those are very big questions. Um, I don't think that they can be answered right now at this point in time, but we will continue to work on. but we will continue to work on those and work at moving that forward. So I appreciate the time you've taken to give us your perspectives and your thoughts. They're very important to us. And we have made notes and will continue to fight in this regard. So thank you very much and I will leave it at that. Thank you. I think with that, we are ready to move into the media scrum. And so for that, I will adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you to everyone for coming today and those who are on the line, those who provided their comments and thoughts. Calgary Police Service members and members of the public can now leave the meeting. Commissioners may choose to take a break if they wish. Chief and I will stay on to take questions from the media. Commissioners and presenters of the in-camera portion of the meeting are asked to reconvene. I think at as close as we can to 6, about 15 minutes, as we have an external presenter coming back at 6 o'clock. So I will adjourn the public's portion and ask for the media piece to start. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chair. We have only one member of media who's registered to speak and that is Jason Herring. Jason, give me a second and I will ask you to open your line. I know there are some other media outlets queued up in the webinar Observers Gallery. So if you wish to speak, I just ask you to use the raise hand function and I will call you after we get through our registered speaker. Jason, you should be able to go ahead.
All right, I think it should be open here.
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Great, okay. I just want to follow up on this last piece of discussion, which came up a couple of times during the meeting. Chief Neufeld, what can you tell me about where Calgary Police are at with the collection of race-based data on use of force, like what Toronto released earlier this month? And how will the service use what is collected here to inform policy and policing decisions?
Yes, thank you. I think the important Oh, hang on, we just gotta get something shut off here. I'll just try it again. Okay, that's better. I think the important thing to note is that there's probably a larger amount and and better data coming out of Toronto right now as an example, because that province has had legislation that's required, the collection of race-based data now for some time. I think it may go back to 2019, but three years, I'm being told. So yeah, so around 2019. So yeah, so again, as we talked about, that's a complex piece to put in place. We are in the process of putting that in place and in fact, we have it in place. But it's just around perfecting the work that we're doing here. So we're collecting race-based data in a variety of ways. One of them relates to professional standards complaints. That was one of the early ones we were able to put in place. And then other interactions such as, you know, street checks and use of force, as you've explained there, that's, those are pieces that are being done as well. So ultimately, when we're in a place to have collected the data and have that sort of sussed out the process for that in the way that we're happy with, we will publish that in the same way that Toronto did and give access to the data to academic institutions and anybody else that wants to have a look at it.
All right, a quick follow-up on that and then question another topic. The follow-up there, just is there anything concrete on time when the police can say as to when we might see that data release? The other topic is, just wondering if there's any update on the thin blue line patch. You know, accounting of how many folks, how many officers might still be wearing those. I know the deadline for getting rid of them was May 31st, but I don't know what the compliance level is. Can you shed any light on that?
Yep, for sure. In terms of timelines. Try it again here. In terms of timelines, yeah, probably, we probably have something preliminary before the end of the year. If everything goes as planned in relation to our data. The other piece that you're talking about around the thin blue line, I'm actually, in terms of compliance, I'm not aware of any non-compliance. And so I've not seen unauthorized patches or thin blue lines being worn after that May 31st date. And I'm also not aware of anybody having reported any. I don't believe we've had any complaints and I'm not aware of any at all, so.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you. And our next participant is Rick from CBC. Go ahead, Rick.
My apologies for being muted. I'm assuming you can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. And thanks for taking my call. Further on the thin blue line patch, I'm wondering if the policy extends to stickers on marked cruisers. We have photos of a marked police cruiser last Thursday with a thin blue line sticker located near the rear brake light. Does the commission or the chief have a position or is that recognized within the policy?
It wouldn't be technically something recognized within the policy, the way that it came out. But we don't, we don't have the blue line insignia on our vehicles either. So if you have a picture, Rick, please feel free to send it to us. We'd have a look at it. I'd be interested in seeing what's fixed there and we'd be interested in knowing how it got there. And I just repeat, we do not have authorized thin blue line insignia for placement on our vehicles.
Just to follow up, is there any allowed, non-preapproved stickering allowed on any police vehicles?
So when it comes to uniforms, when it comes to vehicles, when it comes to this type of thing, we have standards that are put together there by Fleet and Facilities or Uniform Committee. And so there are pieces that are approved to be on. Anything that's not specifically been approved to be present there would not be authorized. So I'm not sure what you're talking about specifically, and that's why I'm saying if you would send me the picture that you have, send it in through our corporate communication folks, that would be really helpful. And then we could see exactly what you're talking about. But by virtue of something not being, unless it's approved, it's not and shouldn't be on there.
Thank you for that clarity. I will contact media relations and get it through to your office.
Thank you. That's helpful.
I don't see any other participants with raised hands, so I'll just give a quick minute. Oh, one has I see a name, but I don't see a media outlet identified. So if you could maybe contact us ahead of the meeting next time to register, that would be helpful. No further questions. So I think we're done. Thank you.